Oh, she's muted.
Clerk, you're muted, Terry.
Well, that wasn't gonna work.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Please call the roll.
Mayor Morrow?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Girba?
Present.
Councilmember CO?
He's here.
He's here. He's muted.
You unmute yourself, folks.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Dillon?
Here.
Councilmember Del Orgo? I didn't see him.
No.
Just signed on.
Sir.
Okay. Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
I'm here.
Okay. City Manager Campout?
You.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent Wigalski?
Here.
The Treasurer Barrett?
Here.
Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green?
Here.
And then I had Jeff Bordeis, but I don't know if he's here or not.
Yeah, no, he is. He will not be present this evening. I'd also note for the record that we have Roger Swets, the city's bond counsel, as well as Brian Rubel, our consultant from Tetra Tech. A quorum is present. So we'll proceed with our next action item, which is a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, would you move to approve the work meeting agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon, would you second?
Yes.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded by Girba and Dillon to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or name and address for the record. Again, if you'd like to comment on the wastewater treatment siting study and the future of wastewater services in the city of Celine, please click on the chat icon at the bottom of your screen, and you can type in your comments. They will be read and preserved as part of the public record. We'll give you a few moments to do that. Clerk Royal, did we receive any comments in advance of tonight's meeting?
Not for the work meeting.
Okay, very good. Give you just a few more minutes. If you'd like to type in some comments, questions, reference the wastewater treatment siting study or the future of wastewater services in the city of Celine. Okay, the record will reflect that there are no citizen comments. So we proceed to the one and only discussion item of the evening, which is the wastewater treatment siting study. I'm gonna turn it over to staff and our consultant in just a moment. Some obligatory and opening remarks. I do hope this evening to get very close to a consensus on which direction we'd like to move into. That will require subsequent action and discussion, but I'd like to get us pretty close to that this evening. If that's not achieved this evening, then I would likely, well, I would, not likely, I would suggest that we have a work meeting in advance of our next regular meeting on July 6th to continue the discussion on wastewater and the future of that service here in the city of Celine. Last week, I did have a conversation, referenced this issue with the city manager, along with our bond counsel, Roger Swets and Brian Rubel. So gentlemen, I think Roger, did you want to begin tonight, or would Brian or the city manager, who would like to initiate the discussion this evening?
I can start unless Todd has something he'd like to say.
Oh, go ahead, Roger.
Okay. Just a quick note, Mayor, Warren Kramer from Robert W. Baird, the city's financial advisor, was also gonna join. I just noticed at the last minute here, he did not get the invitation. So I've gotten that out to him, and he's trying to call in. So he may join us here in a few minutes. So just as an overview, if you recall, and I think that the chart that councilmember Dillon was referring to, some of the decision matrix that Tetra Tech has given to the city, one of the, one of the big tasks that we have here is to try and narrow in from the roughly seven or eight alternatives on where the wastewater treatment plant could be located to get to a point where we can, we can focus on which option to pursue. And so one of the things that Warren Kramer and myself had put together to try and help you do this was looking at some financial impacts of the various different options to try and help you get to the point where you could see if those, if those impacts helped you in that, in that matrix to narrow the focus on which alternative to pursue. And so again, we were looking at, at the alternative one options, options 1A and 1B, which would be improvements on the current site or the current site and the adjacent site across the street, vis a vis looking at alternative 3B or 3C as representative of a number of the more expensive options. And what that analysis showed, and then what we're drilling down deeper into for what we showed you tonight, is that the ability to phase the project on the option, with the option 1A and 1B alternatives, you know, does have a significant financial benefit to the users of the system and protects them from the risk that, that growth doesn't happen in the system, which the larger options would be, would be constructing improvements for that growth. So if the growth doesn't happen, those options leave the city in a less than optimal position. So in what we gave you tonight, we really drilled down on those numbers because there were questions in February as, well, what happens if the growth isn't what we would expect it to be? And so, and the materials you've received for the meeting, you see the impact of growth. If it's, the original assumption was 200 REUs a year, and the new material, it was run at 100 REUs a year and at 50 REUs per year. And what that, what that material shows is that even under those circumstances, I think it really still remains financially beneficial to the, to the users of the system to go with the phased approach. Even at the slower 100 REU growth, the, the cost of the improvements is, is, or the cost per year or the, and the quarterly average is significantly lower than the, than the larger project options. If you go down to 50 REUs per year, it looks like, it looks like the phasing option is more expensive, but that's really because the, the scenarios that we gave also built in inflationary factors into the cost of the project. And the simple truth is that if growth were only 50 REUs per year, those future improvements would be pushed so far out into the future as to when they're gonna be needed. It really makes the, it really makes the inflationary analysis absurd. And what really is most likely to happen if growth were only at 50 REUs per year is the city certainly wouldn't need Phase 3 of the improvements and may not even need Phase, Phase 2 of the improvements. So I guess one of the things I want to leave you with, because we had a lot of discussion trying, I think, trying to peg, well, what is the real growth of this going to be? And I think one thing I want to leave you with is I don't think you can really predict that. I think the, the, the figures that staff has produced shows that growth has actually been fairly minimal in the, in the last 10 years. We do know we have some growth on the horizon with some of the possible industrial and, and with the certain residential additions to the system that are coming up. But, you know, if you had to pick, if you had to pick a, if you had to pick a project because based on, on your feeling you needed to be certain about what that growth would be, that would be a risky decision for you to make. But that's the beauty of the option 1A and 1B scenarios, is that it doesn't really matter what the growth is gonna be because if the growth is there, you have the options to move forward in future years to add the capacity for that growth. And if, if, if growth isn't there, you simply don't do the additional options and, and don't incur that cost for the, for the users of the system. So I'm happy to answer all the questions that you may have. I don't mean to, I don't mean to forestall further discussion on this financial analysis. Warren Kramer and I put a fair amount of work into this, and we're happy to, we're happy to talk about it. But I also don't want this particular piece of analysis, which we spent a lot of time talking about, to distract you from maybe moving on to the, the next step of kind of the decision matrix analysis. And, and so I guess what I would leave you with is that if you're fairly sure that you think the phasing approach with options either 1A or 1B is the right way to go, I'm happy to answer questions, but maybe it's not a good use of our time to dig too deep into these numbers. And maybe what the council would like to do in that event is maybe move on to maybe what's the next natural progression of that decision. And that is, do we, does, does, does the council want to just pursue 1A expansion on the current site? Or does the council want to investigate also then going on to option 1B? I'm assuming that the council is probably gonna wanna at least seriously look at that option of doing 1B. And so I, one of the things that we, I think Brian Rubel's come prepared with tonight is some discussion to help you start to analyze 1A versus 1B if the council's ready to get to that point. So with that, I'll just, I'll stop at this point and either take questions or if we, if it's time to turn to Brian, that's fine, too.
Yeah, let's do that first, Roger. Thank you for that, that analysis and commentary is, just for the purposes of taking accurate minutes and maintaining an appropriate record. Has, has Mr. Kramer joined us yet or no?
No.
Okay, very good. Well, please, either Clerk Royal or Attorney Swets, if, if Warren does join the meeting, please, please make me aware of that because I would like him to, to comment and perhaps elaborate on the analysis that, that you, Roger, and Warren did together. With that, Mr. Rubel, Mr. Brian Rubel, do you care to make some comments before we open it up for questions?
It'll be very brief, I promise. I thought I would just review this slide again, and, and did that colorful slide appear on the flow path?
I do not see any visual or slides on my screen.
Okay. It's the same slide I showed last time where I had the steps of the flow path.
There it is.
Is it?
The alternative evaluation metrics. Is that the slide you want to show?
I think that might be the one that Ms. Dillon was asking about. Did a flow path chart just pop up in his place?
No, it's the alternative evaluation matrix.
Okay. All right. Well, hmm, hmm, hmm. Let me turn this off, and maybe I can get that on there. I won't take much time if we can't get to it quickly here. It is, okay, I see what's going. No, I don't. It's not, oh, here we go. I think I got it. Is a flow path displayed?
Major project progression flow path, 1 through 6.
Thank you. We talked, you've seen this many times, so. Again, step one was the siting study. And based on the last couple of meetings, I, I got very few questions comparing the, the sites and the alternatives any longer. In fact, most of the questions, I believe I fielded last time, were in regards to step two, which is what's the next step? Should we pick a phased approach near, near the current plant? Or I was getting quite a few questions on Phase 4, again, the sequence of the work, the technologies we'd use and so forth. The step four is quite a, in my opinion, quite a, quite a bit away, and I think there's some preliminary things that we need to tackle first. And one of the questions I got last week was what I'll call due diligence of the site, the site on West Monroe, excuse me, west of the Monroe streets. And we talked about a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental assessment as the next step to just do due diligence to understand that property, the risks of using that property. And there is a handout in your package that summarized the first of those steps, which would be the Phase 1. And it's more of a paper study to look at existing records to understand the use of that property and the risks. And then after Phase 1, you likely would proceed to a Phase 2 process. Accompany me tonight. I have a guest on the call is Patty McCaw, who works at Tetra Tech. Patty is a geologist and does quite a few of these studies. So I felt that she would do a much better job of answering questions about the Phase 1 and Phase 2 approach than myself. So I have, she is with us tonight and could go through the one-page handout that is in your package.
Well, if, if she is present, Mr. Rubel, if she would maybe take two to five minutes to go over that, I think that would be helpful to, to, excuse me, not only city council, but to staff and the members of the public who are watching tonight's meeting.
She would be welcome to do that. I think she sent me a text that she may need somebody to unmute her connection.
I'm good. It's unmuted.
Oh, very good.
Hi, hi, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. So I can, I can briefly run through a typical Phase 1 scenario, what we do, but I'm happy to answer questions. So basically, what a Phase 1 is, is to address due diligence on a property. So if you're going to go purchase some property, you want to know the history of that parcel. Typically, we do this, we do this quite often for industry, commercial, even, you know, light development like solar, things like that, that are going into an ag field. It's a very common practice. As Brian said, it is basically a paper study. It's what, something we would call desktop. We're essentially looking for any kind of liability, right? Basically, the presence or the likely presence of a hazardous substance is what the ASTM standard refers to it as. And this could be also the threat of a release, not just a particular release. So we, we talk about releases as, as a potential for some sort of contaminant to get into the ground. So if you have an electroplating company, for instance, you're concerned about those chemicals potentially getting into the ground. So we look at housekeeping practices. We do a site visit. We talk to people, knowledgeable site contact, we call them. So somebody who's got information on the property, who's been on the property for some amount of time, has intimate knowledge of maybe what material has been through the site or what phases the site's been through. In addition to that, we do what's called the database study. There are many databases out there that are compiled by database companies, so we just basically order it based on the address. And it gives us information about if there is any underground storage tanks out there, did they leak ever? They've, they've got federal databases, state databases, local databases that all get compiled, and we review that information, pull it together, figure out what could be an environmental concern. Maybe there was a past release that was never closed at the site. That would be in this database search. We also take a look at historical aerials. That tells us, maybe sometimes it directs us to potential dumping areas. We look at topographic maps to see what's come into the area, how things were expanded upon. Maybe there was a pond out there. Ponds are good places for things to have gotten dumped a long time ago. We look at city directories that tell us the address, like who lived there before or what businesses were there before. And we also do searches at the local level where we will call, you know, a fire department, has there ever been any fires out at the site? The health department to find out if there's any septic records, if there's any wells on site, irrigation or drinking water wells, things of that nature. There's a list of exclusions on that, that document that's up. It's generally, we generally don't do hazardous building materials surveys during this, but, but we can. It's not part of the standard. We do that often, though, especially for commercial buildings. I give you an idea if there's asbestos in the building or if there's something that's gonna have to be mitigated. And, and basically, we, we provide all of that information in a document that has all the backup with it. But what you're, what you want to know is, do I have any recognized environmental concerns? That's the language of, of the industry. And if there are, we give you direction on what to do next in a Phase 2. So if, for instance, if I go back to that, you know, an old pond that's not there today, maybe we have some information that, from the knowledgeable site contact, that back in the day, they used to dump things, you know, in the back 40. And there's some information about it as to what kind of compounds they had at the site. We would want to investigate that. We would go out with a drill rig and do some sampling out there based on the information that we've compiled. That was a lot. Any questions?
No, that's good. Let's, if you don't mind, we'll let Mr. Rubel wrap up his presentation, and then we'll, we'll do a round robin. And if folks have questions for either our bond counsel or either of our guests from Tetra Tech, the chair would be happy to entertain those. So thank you for that analysis. Mr. Rubel, any final remarks before we do a round of questions?
I have none other than to thank you for your time tonight.
Very good. Okay, well, we're going to start this evening with Mayor Pro Tem Girba and with councilmember Kamara Sulek. And again, we are a little bit pressed for time, so we'll do a, a first round of questions, and each member will be allocated five minutes. So Mr. Girba, if you have any questions or comments, and please indicate who you're directing them to. The floor is yours.
This may be to Roger and Brian. If we move forward with the phasing, whatever, in terms of the bond issue, because it's such a significant dollar amount, in my mind, I want this to go before the voters, similar to what we did for the water treatment plant. And, and that time, because it was such a significant amount, what type of timeframe would we be looking at in terms of making some kind of, you know, proposal and so forth?
As far as timeframe, we could adjust that. I, I think you'd want to do, go through the preliminary design step to really nail down the cost of that Phase 1 in, in much more detail. So I, I think you could, you could be ready, say, spring of 2021 would be my best guess at this point.
Okay.
Roger, anything you'd like to add to that? You're muted.
Brian?
Yeah.
I wanted to let you know Warren is on the line now.
Very good. Thank you, Warren. We welcome you. Roger, any comments to Dean's or Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Girba's question, excuse me?
Yeah, I apologize. I was stuck on, stuck on mute there. Could you just quickly repeat the question?
Um, what would we have to do or what would be the, I guess, scenario to get a proposal on the ballot in order to vote for this? Because it's such a large dollar amount, from my perspective and what we've done in the past, that we would have a, some type of a millage proposal that, or not a millage proposal, but we would have a proposal to move forward with spending this kind of money. We did something similar with our water treatment plant.
Yeah, the, the, the avenue that the city would have to, to vote on this would be to issue unlimited tax general obligation bonds. That's not the kind of bond issue you normally would do for, for, for a utility project like this because you, you wouldn't intend to pay for it with taxes. You would normally, you would rather pay for that with, with system revenues. I, I did note from your debt statement that you did do that with the water treatment facility. So I just wanted to mention that that is a little bit of an unusual way to go with it. It is the avenue to get it to a vote, though, so I can understand maybe why that was, was done then. To get something, if you wanted to place something on the November ballot, you could, the city would have to approve that by early August to get it on the November ballot. I, I do want to make one caution, though, as, as, as we're thinking about this. You know, these improvements, to some extent, are going to be mandated by the, by Eagle as part of the consent order process that the city's going through. So to, to submit it to a vote when the city doesn't necessarily have the luxury of deciding whether to do something or not, you know, could, is a little tricky. So we'd want to have a lot of discussion about that before we went down that road. Your Eagle's not gonna dictate to you which one of these alternatives to do, but they are gonna dictate to you that, that the city do a project in a reasonable timeframe, given that a number of the things that would be addressed in Phase 1 of this project are probably gonna be needed to rectify some of the violations that are covered in, in, in the enforcement proceedings.
Yeah, and actually, that makes sense from that perspective of if we're gonna have the state hold us to accountable, we may have to figure out, you know, how to move forward without necessarily vote. But something as large, just for me, I feel more comfortable with the community behind it. And just one other question for Patty regarding the environmental study that would potentially happen?
Yes.
Would we also be doing that at our existing site? Maybe I misunderstood or didn't hear.
No, it would be for the, the new property. You want to know what you are purchasing, essentially, what liability you could be incurring.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to also cover our base because if we expand on our current site, there is an old dump and something else that's there. So at this point in time, just being clear that where we're gonna look and what we do. My other thing is.
You can, you can do that. I should, I should caveat that. It's always good to know ahead rather than be surprised.
Yes, definitely. And that's one of my concerns there on that piece. Other than that, that's fine for me. I don't have any further questions. Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Girba. Councilwoman Dillon, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My first question is probably for Mr. Rubel. So if we're projecting, if we were to use the 50 REU number, and that's very low growth, would we actually need to expand beyond our current footprint? Could we just utilize our current, the current facility and reconfigure it?
I, I think that is possible. If you need to build a storage facility to help with the wet weather flow. We are showing, our calculations are showing that the plant is able to go well beyond the 1.8 million gallons per day that the state has listed as its capacity, a better job of controlling those wet weather.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is probably for Mr. Swet. And I'm referring to the last page of your memo that shows the 200, the 100, and the 50s. And I'm just trying to kind of better understand in my mind as to dollars. So you're saying that the numbers grow exponentially, like if you look between the 100 and the 50, because you're, you're cost averaging out so far, correct? Oh, you're muted.
Okay, yeah, sorry, correct.
Okay. So is there a way to calculate that without showing like the Phase 2, Phase 3, so that we have a more realistic? Because I mean, when you look at that number, it's at the 50, it's, it's really overwhelming.
Well, this is Warren Kramer, and I just wanted to point out that we did our best to take in consideration the inflationary increase of the improvements over time. And that's why the average annual cost goes up. But I think it's very important to look at the phasing of the projects. You know, the first phase would be this year. The second phase, based on, you know, 50 REUs a year, wouldn't take place until 2069. And we assume that the estimates that were provided to us, you know, continue to grow at the assumed inflation rate. So that's why.
And I think one thing just to keep in mind there is that with that very slow growth rate, it really pushes those next phases so far out that, you know, we included inflationary factor in the construction cost at the, at the council's request from the February meeting. But at some point, those second and third phases get pushed so far out, you can't really predict what inflation is gonna be. And frankly, once you get that far out, the, the sewer technologies, as we envision them today, may not even be applicable anymore. So I think the more, the more critical takeaway from those scenarios is really, slow growth pushes those future phases so far down the line that they're probably not gonna be needed. And, and we could just take them off the, the analysis. And we could run some numbers that do that if you want to. But I, I do want to encourage the council to kind of stay focused on, on the task here, which is to kind of say, narrow in on, does phasing make options 1A and 1B strong enough that we feel comfortable that that's the direction we want to head?
Right. No, I understand that. I, I just, I mean, it, it's gonna be significant increases for, you know, for households, businesses. And so I, I guess I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as to what these dollars are going to look like and that the public is aware of it, of what we're talking about. Because it's easy to talk the big $80 million. I mean, that's, you know, it's just such a big number that it doesn't really have any meaning. But when you break it down into what is the average cost, annual cost, quarterly cost, that, that becomes a real dollar number to people. And so I just want. And so, I just want to be really mindful of that. Um, but I guess going back to what you're saying is that, I mean, I, I don't know at this point where we see any advantage to, to option 3C at this point. I mean, is there a reason that we're still considering it?
Uh, be- because council hasn't taken it off the table.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Councilman CEO, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, a couple of questions. I guess first for Patty. Patty, have we done any work at all yet to look at the, uh, lot across the street and what kind of environmental shape that's in?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So, that's still a complete unknown.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm totally in favor of the phasing at this point. The only difficulty I really see with the phasing is if we decide to go ahead and adopt the phase approach to it, and we get out there to the point where we figure we need the, the second parcel across the street, and we find out that there's some nasty, nasty stuff buried in the ground over there that's going to take, you know, millions of dollars to uncover and recover and, and get rid of, uh, before we can even use the property. I just, that looms large in my mind, and I wonder if it should.
Well, if, if I could speak to that, I think, um, you know, I think if we're, if we're to the point where we think phasing is, is the right approach, then the next decision is, do we just want to focus on 1A or do we want to look at, at, at 1B as, as another alternative? I think what Tetra Tech is bringing to you tonight is the due diligence that the city can do to try and get you some more concrete answers to the question you just asked. If you, if you, if you start to, if, if the council would decide to pursue the, the environmental studies, that will then give you more data to now move on to that next decision and see, well, is 1B feasible or is the environmental contamination there just too big of a problem and, and, and we'll really have to focus on 1A?
Okay. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Councilwoman Mitchell, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, everybody. Um, I had a question about the property across the street as well, and Ms. Dylan answered that. The last I knew, that property wasn't approved to ever become anything like a park. It, it was going, it was considered toxic forever. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm not sure why we're looking at that. Um, Mr. Rubel, can you answer a question about, um, stormwater? We had a resident write us a few weeks ago about stormwater. And he said, if you have some way of separating it out, then the, the capacity of the plant is going to be, is it going to be stretched as much? But my understanding is we have to treat stormwater before discharging it. Is that right?
What's an enter sanitary sewer? Yes, you need to provide full treatment of that water.
But if it's, is it possible to reduce the amount of storm sewer, uh, input to the plant?
Yes. I, I would say every owner of a sanitary sewer should be doing that as part of, uh, routine maintenance, looking for those sources. I, I will say that they historically are very difficult. These projects are very difficult to achieve a, a large impact, uh, due to the age of the system, the sheer number of defects, and the fact that studies show that about half of the stormwater impact originate on private property and get discharged to the public system. So.
So, so I get, I'm so sorry. I think I'm not being clear. Um, is there a way, if we don't have to treat purely stormwater, is there any way to have a, a, a different route so that we could have advantage of more capacity?
I, I would say you have the, the routes already. You have a storm sewer system throughout the city. What an older system has is it has lots of little defects, lots of ways for the stormwater to get, unintentionally get into the sanitary sewer system. So, to reduce that stormwater impact, you literally need to plug thousands of little holes.
So, right. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is that Mr. Wygowski has often talked to us about the effect of rain, right? And so, that we are getting stormwater that's affecting the capacity that we have for sewer water?
I've, I've answered that same question, I, three different ways I've tried.
Okay. I can follow up with you later. That's fine.
Can I answer that for you?
Please.
I did. Oh, sure.
Well, Kristen, we have a, what's called a separate system where we have a sanitary sewer system and a stormwater system. They're completely separate. Older communities used to have a combined sewer system where all the stormwater and the wastewater went together and then it got treated. So, even, even though it was our, ours is separate due to infiltration and inflow of the groundwater, that gets into the sanitary system. But the storm sewer system are different pipes, and they operate differently and discharge directly to the, to the river.
Okay. I will follow up with you. I really appreciate that. I think you were close to saying what I was interested in. Um, and, uh, Mr. Marl, what is our plan? You know, Dean, Mr. Gearball talked about a, a vote. Um, and I think that the next best thing is a lot of public engagement. Um, and my experience was the Henry Street, um, traffic study, and we had residents in, and we had different things. So, what is your plan, uh, for public engagement?
Well, that's, that's obviously a, a challenge under the current circumstances. But, uh, first I would want, uh, council to develop some sort of consensus, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that that consensus is to move forward with option 1A and subsequently 1B, and perhaps also do an analysis of the former Universal Diecast Hoover Ball Bearing Site on Monroe Street. But this would certainly be a topic that I would like to have some forums on later this summer or fall. Um, you know, my preference is always to do things in person, because I think it results in a better, more substantive discussion. But, uh, if, if that's not safe and that's not feasible, then certainly doing something on an online platform, similar to what we're doing tonight, would, uh, at the, at a bare minimum be, be necessary.
So, are you thinking about, um, because we're, I, I, am I mistaken? I, I thought we were going back to in, you know, people-to-people meetings, face-to-face next time?
Correct.
In July.
Yep. The tentative plan is barring some, uh, barring the governor making, uh, a, a, a decision or, or, um, submitting a subsequent, uh, executive directive that, uh, that would, uh, extend our ability to, to, to meet remotely. Yes, we are going to be meeting, uh, our, our plan is to meet in person on July the 6th.
Okay. So, and then we have the no more than, I think right now we're no more than 10 in a room. Is that right?
Yes, under the current directive.
Okay. All right. I just, I appreciate you talking about that little bit. Um, let's see. I'm trying to think if I have any other questions from my notes. Um, Mr. Rubel, can you talk a little bit? I think my last question is going to be, um, if, if we do a more phased approach, is there a risk of using lots of different contractors? Could we be on the hook if we have an issue for a piece coming in later on? And then they say, well, look, this, this new thing isn't what we thought, and now it's going to cost, you know, $25,000 more? How do you ameliorate that risk?
Major capital projects are done in phases all the time. I, I think the benefits of doing that far outweigh any risk.
So, would we have an overseeing company, you know, consistently looking at the whole thing like we have in some other projects? Is that what you're saying?
I, yes. Uh, if, any of these phases of construction, I, I think you would hire a general contractor that would manage each of the individual trades. They would manage the electrical subcontractor, the mechanical subcontractor, the site contract.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Mr. Campbell, I want to jump back to, um, uh, Councilwoman Mitchell's first comment. Um, I know you had reached out either via phone or email to Mr. Stolton, our contact at Adient, the spinoff of Johnson Controls, that's the deed holder for the Monroe Street property in question. Have you heard back from that, from Mr. Stolton?
Personally, I've been attempting multiple times to make contact and have not been successful. And I'm continuing to do that this week to try and, if not, uh, Mr. Stolton, uh, to find out who, um, who our new contact person might be.
Correct. Uh, very good. Uh, you know, I think a, um, another presentation, a public presentation before city council would be, uh, is in order. Um, and then also confirm for me that, uh, it was my understanding from his most recent communiques and presentations that, uh, Johnson Controls was going to remediate the former Hoover, uh, Universal Diecast Hoover Ball Bearing Site to an industrial standard, uh, which means that, um, obviously a, a residential development or a commercial development wouldn't be per, uh, permitted. But at least in theory, uh, an expansion of, of wastewater technology, um, could feasibly work on the site based on their, based on, based on, I, I, I had a loss for words, but based on what they believe that their remediation level will be.
Right. And just to, just to know that, uh, Adient, uh, is the new, is the current owner, you may recall, Mayor, not Johnson Controls.
Correct. I'm sorry. Yes.
So, but, uh, that is my understanding that, that's what their, uh, planning, uh, been working towards is cleaning it to industrial level, um, and not, not to residential level. Uh, and so, uh, whatever, that would certainly limit what type of development that could go on there. And, and, uh, but potentially, uh, I would think that, uh, uh, oh, a wastewater treatment plant would, would, uh, probably be allowed there.
Can you, uh, yeah, please, uh, please keep following up with Mr. Stolton from Adient, because, uh, we'd like to have something tangible to report and share with the community and with council in the very near future. Thank you for following up on that. Um, Councilmember Del Orco, you have five minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my, my first question is, uh, most likely for Roger and Warren. Um, I'm looking at page four of 15 of the memorandum that was sent out with regard to the financial scenarios. Um, it was the second paragraph down. It's looking at the advantages of option 1A over 3C and, and looking at, uh, the typical residential customer impact on their bill would be about $205 on average cost per year over the life of the financing at 258. And then option 3C obviously is much more expensive at 852 and, um, coming down to 360 over the life as you add residential REUs. My question is, um, for the 1A analysis, do these numbers, uh, average all phases of the build-out, meaning phases one, two, and three? Or are we just looking at phase one when you come up with those, uh, financial predictions?
They, they do average all three phases. They average them at different times depending on when the time is needed, given the, the rate of growth that's projected. But each one of those scenarios includes all three phases.
Okay. Very good. That's very helpful. Thank you. Um, so, my next question is, is most likely for, uh, for Patty, if she's with us. Oh, there you are. Um, I wondered if you had a sense of a timeline of how long it would take for the environmental impact study to, to move along on the, uh, Adient property?
Mm-hmm. We generally can finish them in three to four weeks from authorization.
Quick turnaround on that.
Yep.
So, do you have a sense of what types of contamination you might find that would preclude us from being able to move forward and developing this as an expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, i.e. PFAS high levels would, would be cost prohibitive to remediate?
Um, generally, for these types of, uh, sites, we're looking at two categories of contamination. It's usually, um, petroleum-based products and, uh, oils, hydraulic fluids, things like that, or chlorinated solvents that are used in degreasing or something like that. Um, both of those are fairly easy for cleanup. Uh, as far as PFAS goes, I don't have enough information to, to determine whether or not they had any PFAS.
Yeah. The reason for my question is this is a site known to contain certain levels of PFAS. So, that's what we need to be thinking about.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, I, I think I've resolved in my mind certainly to move forward with, um, taking 3C off the table and looking at options 1A and 1B. I do think we need to at least explore the environmental impact of, of what's going on across the street at Monroe and the likelihood that we can't squeeze everything we want to in the current site, uh, with option 1A. And I, I have a question for, uh, city manager, mayor, everyone at the desk about, um, why we haven't looked at the property directly in front of the wastewater treatment plant at 237 Monroe and, um, acquiring that, which was at one time owned by the city and served as a parking lot for the, uh, Universal Diecast facility many years ago. I don't know why that hasn't come up before, and I'm trying to understand that.
Mr. Campbell, do you want to take that? You're muted.
Um, well, we, yeah, I don't have a, I guess I don't have a great answer for you, because at least in my tenure, it's always been privately owned here. Um, and it's, we haven't looked at, at that, um, from the sighting study. I, I don't know. Um, it just hasn't been considered, and I, I don't, I apologize. I don't have a better answer for you than that. Um, I don't know, uh, Mr. Rubel, if, um, maybe you could comment from the sighting study perspective? Is it, is that, I don't know if it's lack of size or if it's, if it's, does it have appropriate acreage? I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with that parcel. I suspect it isn't large enough to support an entire plant. It, it may be of, of value in a, a single process. Um, again, I would think the more land, the better, to help your current point.
I'm just thinking in terms of if, uh, the Adient property turns out to be a bust and we can't develop that site, then what's the next best option for us in terms of expanding 1A? And that might be a viable solution to that conundrum.
Yes. No, I think that's an excellent point, uh, Councilmember Del Orco. And if there was consensus to begin, move forward and do further evaluation on option 1A and 1B, in addition to doing a phase one and phase two environmental on the former, on the current Adient property, I think we also need to do some due diligence and research the parcel in front of our existing plant. Because while Mr. Rubel is correct, it's not large enough to, to house a new facility. Uh, it's certainly large enough to, uh, to, to, to maintain some, uh, uh, additional equipment and technology.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Camara Sulek, you have five minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that was an excellent question that Mr. Del Orco had. I was wondering the same thing with the property that's in front of it and then property that's a little bit to the, to the north that I don't think that we're currently utilizing that also maybe, um, may, you know, may be helpful depending upon what we find out about the, about the Adient, uh, property. I believe we discussed that briefly in a, in a, in a recent meeting that, that it's an old, an, an old or a, a park that was never improved because it's, it's right, it's, it's close to People's Park. Um, so, this question's probably for Mr. Campbell. Is that property that we could look at utilizing as well as 237, uh, South Monroe?
Certainly, we could take a look at it and see, uh, what, if it's feasible or not. Certainly, yes, we could look, take a look at it.
All right. Do we know what the size of that, of that parcel is or that piece?
Not a thought in my head, I do not.
Okay. Um, now, you've been trying to get ahold of the owner for Adient to see what the status is on their remediation, correct?
Representative, yes.
Correct.
Um, do we have any idea of where they're at aside from bringing it up to industrial standards?
Well, if I recall correctly, when, when, uh, Mr. Stolton last, uh, presented to council a few months ago, um, I believe he stated that, a couple of things. One, the, um, the cleanup in, in front, uh, closest to, um, closest to Monroe Street, that cleanup on-site, um, uh, VOCs, uh, that they found out was, uh, not being successful. However, before they could, um, change, the, my understanding is they do have a plan to do that, uh, before they implemented that new plan of clean, of a cleanup for that, that area. Um, you may recall that, uh, they found PFAS in some of the, um, observation wells. So, my understanding is, uh, from the last info- So my understanding is from the last information, last conversation that I had with Mr. Stolton was that, after the presentation, the council was that they were shifting their focus to make the PFAS mitigation priority.
Okay. That's, that's, that's good. That's good information. So with, with that, now it'll take us three to four weeks approximately to perform a phase one and approximately the same timeframe if we need to do a phase two. Is that correct?
So a phase two could potentially take longer just because you've got a subcontractor with the drilling rig, you've got to get scheduled. And then there's turnaround time at the lab is usually 14 business days. So it takes a little bit longer for that.
Okay. Now, can you, can you tell me anything? And I won't hold you to it because this is, you know, very subjective. If they're just hearing that there is some evidence of PFAS on that site, what, what is that, what does that tell you without doing any research? I mean, what are your, what thoughts would you be willing to go out on a limb and, and tell us about?
Regarding what remediation or what they've done out there?
About reme, reme, yeah, remediation so that we could use that Adient property or, or a portion of it. I don't know if that's even feasible. We're, I think we should look at all options and, and best decision on the information that we have.
Sure. So I can tell you a few things. If, if you were to purchase a piece of property that has contamination on it, your intended purpose is, is not the same as what was previously done. You can have some protection under the law by doing something called the baseline environmental assessment. So you would do this after the phase two where you figured out what the contamination is out there. And you could then say, look, we found this contamination out here. We don't plan on using PFAS in any of our processes. Or we do, and this is what we plan on using, you know, wastewater treatment plant does have PFAS. And, and get some protection from what, from what contamination is already there. You could also restrict the property. There may already be deep restrictions on this property for what its purpose can be besides just restricting it to an industrial use or non-residential, as we call it. You can restrict it to ensure that, that nobody's drinking the water, that nobody's coming in contact with it. It's not being used for irrigation, things like that. So there are some other things that you can do to, to limit your liability.
Okay. So is it safe to say that based on that, that Adient site is, it doesn't eliminate that for potential consideration for our purposes?
Correct. I would say that it wouldn't, it wouldn't limit, I wouldn't strike it out without knowing more information.
Is the, the depth needed, you know, subsurface, is, does that play into it all for, you know, the wastewater treatment and just what kind of contaminants that are there? I'm sure that would be, we would get an answer with a phase one or a phase two on, on how, how deep the contamination is.
Absolutely. Yeah. So a, a phase two would be to help understand what we call the nature and extent of the contaminants on site. So the goal is to figure out not only what you have, but where it's located. Did it go offsite? Are there, you know, if you've got offsite issues, that's a bigger problem, right? You don't want to take responsibility for that. So again, you're looking for some liability protection under the law for, for those sorts of things.
Okay. So these, the phase one and phase two are fairly standardized, but I get the impression that there is some latitude there on, depending upon what you find or what you don't find. I, is there an estimated cost for what a phase one and a phase two would be a range that you could provide?
Sure.
Again, without holding you to it.
Yeah. I just, I was just looking at the size of the parcel. I would, I would guess anywhere between on the low end, you're looking at probably $6,000 to $10,000 for six in the low end, 10 to the high end for a phase one. They're fairly routine. We don't have to do a lot. The one thing is that I don't think I mentioned before that we would want to do is do what's called a FOIA request, a Freedom of Information Act request from the state to understand the latest information that's been submitted to the state as far as, you know, any lab results or any reporting that they've done as a requirement for their, you know, whatever contamination they have on site, whatever program they're under, under the state. So we would want to do that. That does, that may take a little, takes a little bit more staff time to review that. So it, it could be in that little, maybe eight to $10,000 range to do that. I would imagine there's quite a bit out here.
So if that's done, just so I have a timeframe, if, if that were to be done tomorrow, before, how far back would you have us for the information that was reported to the state? How up to date of information would that be? Current, current?
I'm sorry, I missed part of the question because you're.
Yeah, broadband's cutting out, Councilmember Camaro Sulak.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
You're cutting out again.
Yeah.
Shoot. All right.
So I know it was a timeframe question, so if I could. I don't, I don't know what it was though.
Can you hear me now?
It's cutting out.
Now? Okay. Then I'll, I'll just, I'll just pass then. That's good.
Sorry about that. You can throw it in the chat room. I can respond.
All right, folks. We are running, thank you Patty. We are running a little short on time. So what I'd like to propose, unless there's objections from the group, is that we revisit these issues at a work meeting that is tentatively scheduled for July 6th. We would convene in person at 6:00 PM. Mr. Rubel, Patty, Attorney Swatz, Warren, are you all able to be in attendance either in person or via phone?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Very good. Roger?
By phone, I could be.
Okay. Mr. Rubel?
I believe so.
Very good. Patty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. And so to my council colleagues, I am look, I will be at the conclusion of that meeting in three weeks. I will be looking for consensus. I think it's going to be to move forward on option 1A and 1B and perhaps some further evaluation of these adjacent parcels, talk a little bit more about financing, and then from my own perspective, seeing what we can do to control those costs so that we don't place an undue burden on our residents and business owners.
I'm going to go out and smoke and then.
Three weeks.
Let's just sit down here for a little bit.
Why don't you mute yourself there, Mr. Kramer? Thanks, Warren. That gives.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's all right.
Hear me say that I shouldn't have said.
No, I think you were talking to a dog, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I was talking to my beautiful wife is what I was doing.
Okay. Not a big deal.
Oh, well, it is, depending on what I said.
It wasn't anything inappropriate.
Well, Mayor, my apologies. I, I thought I was muted. My apologies.
Not a big deal. You're the only person that has a more booming voice than I do. So it, it sort of overtook my, my spiel, but that's all.
My apologies, Mayor.
No, you're fine. So what I was saying is that gives council members three weeks to provide in writing to staff, legal counsel, or a consultant, any additional questions, scenarios, or bits of information that you would like before we reconvene on the 6th. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. I have exactly 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move to adjourn?
So moved.
And Mr. CEO, would you second? Mr. CEO, are you there? Make sure you're unmuted. Perhaps he's not here. Councilmember Del Orco, would you, would you second to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Very good. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by Del Orco to adjourn at 7:00 PM. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Just give me one minute. We'll convene into regular session. Okay, the chair will call this regular city council meeting to order at 7:02 PM. I'd asked the city clerk to please call the roll, including council members and staff. And please, folks, make sure you're unmuted.
Mayor Morrow?
Present.
Mayor Protem Gearbaugh?
Here.
Councilmember CEO?
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Dylan?
Here.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Here.
Councilmember Camaro Sulak?
Here.
City Manager Campbell?
Here.
City Engineer DPW Director Ford Ice?
Here.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent Wargowski?
Here.
City Treasurer Bennett?
Here.
Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green?
Here.
You're muted, but.
Did you call me, Terry? I'm here.
Okay. Parks and Rec Director Scruggs?
Here.
Very good. A quorum is present. A few obligatory remarks this evening. First, if you'd like to provide comment either during our first public comment period or our second public comment period, you're going to want to click on the icon at the bottom of the screen that says chat, and you may type in your questions or comments. Please note that the first public comment period is limited to agenda items, but that would include both enumerated action items and discussion items. The second public comment period, you are free to discuss whatever it is that you'd like to discuss. I will note for my council colleagues, we do have a full agenda this evening and a number of discussion items that I think will, will generate a fair amount of conversation and, and debate. So I will be moving at a very brisk pace. So please be on point with your, your questions. And when I call on you, if you do not have questions or comments, just say pass and we'll move along to the next person. So with that, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Councilmember CEO, would you move to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
And Councilmember Camaro Sulak, would you second?
I'll second.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to the first of two citizen comment periods. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And again, you may type your comments in under the chat icon at the bottom of your screen. But before I recognize or ask the clerk to read any comments, I would first ask if we received any written communications in advance of tonight's meeting.
I have two advanced written notifications or comments.
Please. Yeah, please read them.
Okay, the first one is from Jeff Weiss. He says, "As a City of Celine resident, I contacted City Hall last fall to find out about the cost and process to have a secondary water meter installed for my irrigation system. This was to mitigate the cost of water. I was directed to pull up water meter installed for my irrigation." I'm sorry, I was directed to pull up the application for the City of Celine website and submit the paperwork water meter and for a plumbing permit. We did not get to do the work last fall, so this spring I went back to the City of Celine website and pulled up the appropriate paperwork. I noted the fees and communicated that to numerous residents in my neighborhood. They were all going to be doing this process jointly. When I was asked, when I was asking one of the city workers a question about the process, he informed me that my comment about the water meter being $325 was incorrect, that it was the City of Celine's, City of Celine's residents' job to catch errors on paperwork and reported, reported it to them because they didn't properly update the application for almost two years after the price increase. I was then repeatedly told by three different city people, basically that I was to look at the city fee book, that they don't update records and applications in a timely manner. As the City of Celine taxpaying resident, it should not be my job to report to the city their job in updating the appropriate paperwork. I find that to be incredibly unprofessional. The price of the application should be honored for the seven or eight residents there are in the process of having this installed. I think that somehow since the summer of 2018 to the spring of 2020, someone should have updated the appropriate paperwork. I hereby respectfully request that the City of Celine Council and Mayor approve this exception due to the errors on application paperwork on your website. Not only is this good customer service, but I believe there are laws in place that posted prices must be honored. And then the second one is from Stephanie Gray, and she states, "My husband and I are among residents of Huntington Woods who began the process last fall to have a secondary water meter installed for our irrigation system. While we pulled the city's application for this process last fall, we did not move quickly enough to actually have the work done. When we resumed the process this spring, we and some of our fellow neighbors discovered there was a discrepancy between the city fee listed on the paperwork and the actual fee the city says is owed. It's my understanding that this is due to the fact that the wording on the documents has not been changed since 2018 to reflect the current fee structure. Furthermore, it is my understanding that the city believes it is the job of residents to be catching these errors rather than official updates being made in a timely manner. As neither of these policies seem like best practices in coordination with several other homeowners in Huntington Woods, we would like to request that the lower fee of $325 be honored at this time."
Very good. We thank both individuals for their comments. And as the agenda indicates, we'll be discussing that item towards the end of our meeting this evening under the discussion portion of the agenda. Clerk Royal, were there any additional comments submitted?
No.
And the chair would note that there are no comments, there are no comments that have been submitted in these last couple moments via the chat icon at the bottom of the screen. So we will note those two public comments and proceed now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Mr. Gearbaugh, would you be amenable to approving the consent agenda as submitted?
Yes, sir.
And Councilwoman Dylan, would you second?
Mayor, I just wanted to, I thought that we were going to pull out the resolution. Was it going to be read? And if so, does that need to come off the consent?
I did not know we were pulling it, but we can, it does not need to come off the consent, but I would be happy to either have myself or the clerk read it at the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
Okay. And with that, I will, I will second.
Very good. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dylan to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Actually, my, my fault at the beginning of the meeting because there is a, a public hearing regarding a special land use on Bennett Street, so there will be an additional opportunity this evening for people to comment specifically on this issue. So we move now to public hearing agenda item 20-84, special land use in Arbor Music Center. First up is a report from Assistant Community Development Director Green.
Hey, good evening, council. As you guys know, we did a special land use request about a month back, but this time we have a new one. Ms. Karen King, Alex Johnson have submitted a special land use application for proposed music school located at 135 East Bennett. Currently, that land is zoned I-2, so general industrial, but a studio for musical dance or artistic instruction is allowed in this zone. On June, at a June 3rd Special Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission approved the actual combined preliminary and final site plan for this and is also recommending the approval of the special land use. So I'd like to defer any other comments from the Planning Commission to Mayor Morrow or Protem Gearbaugh.
Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, anything you'd like to add as a Planning Commission liaison? You just muted yourself, Dean.
I think the discussion went well with the Planning Commission. We're in support of moving forward. We know the building has some other uses which will have to be addressed in the future, but at least this, this moves it forward and they can be able to do a bit of their work and things. One of the positives was they're going to be painting the building, which hasn't been done in over 30 or 40 years, and looking forward to supporting them as much as we can.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. We'll entertain council questions and comments during the third motion, but at this time, the chair would inter- during the third motion, but at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak on this issue at 7:10 PM. Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move that motion? Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move that motion?
I beg your pardon, I was muted. So moved?
Thank you. And Councilmember Camaro Sulak, would you second?
I will second.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded, open the public hearing at 7:10. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there any member of the public who'd wish to come forward at this time, make comment on a special land use for the Ann Arbor Music, Ann Arbor Celine Music Center located on Bennett Street? Please type in your questions or comments on the, if the, by clicking the icon at the bottom of your screen.
And Mayor Morrow, just to note, we do have Alex Johnson and Karen King from the Music Center on, if we want to give them a chance to comment.
Very good. Let's close the public hearing, and then if they'd like to make a comment as the petitioner applicant, that would be, that would be marvelous. Councilmember Del Orco, would you move to close the public hearing at 7:12?
Oh, moved.
Very good, thank you. And Councilmember CEO, would you second?
Second.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to close the public hearing at 7:12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Now, motion to approve or not to approve the special land use for the Ann Arbor Music Center as submitted. Mr. Gearbaugh is the planning commission rep. Would you move to approve? You're muted again, Dean.
Dang it, I thought I wasn't muted. So moved.
Very good. And Councilwoman Dillon, would you second?
Yes.
Okay. Before we open it up for questions or comments, so we have Karen and Alex, the proprietors of the business, on the line. Good evening. Would you care to make any comment this evening for the public record?
Well, there's not much to say at this point. We're just, we're grateful for the support the city's giving us, and we're also really excited to get that building painted.
Which has been started.
Yes, it has begun.
Well, as we indicated publicly at our most recent planning commission meeting, we're delighted to have you in there, a great addition to Celine. I think you're going to bring some vibrancy and excitement to that area of our community, and I think a lot of people fail to recognize this. Most of that building, especially the second level, that back section of suites, as you noted, Alex, has been abandoned for nearly 25 years. So getting a business and enterprise like yours in that space is, is really fantastic. So fully in support of this and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gearbaugh, any questions or comments? You're muted again.
No. Yeah, I just want to refer that this is a good use for a special use in this area because some of the buildings around that, some of the homes and stuff, it was zoned I-2, but it's eventually, hopefully will be moving more towards a less invasive type of neighborhood. We've already, we rezoned one home at one point, and this moving forward helps the whole area in there, and we look more towards it being a cultural type activity and with the museums and all that and the Hennepin Field. So hopefully with this use and the future, we may want to look at overlay district or something there to encourage this kind of type of use. So I'm moving forward with this, and I'm glad that it's being done.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon, questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
Do, I have a couple of really quick questions, and it might be for Mr. Green. Just quickly, so should they expand within the current building? Do they have to get additional permits? Because it sort of was very specific in here about like the space they were utilizing.
Yeah, for that, the special land use itself, since it's kind of tied to the building, no. If they expanded their space, it'd be more of a site plan amendment, so that'd be more planning commission area.
Okay. And is there anything currently in that building that requires a special use that has not been addressed yet?
Potentially. Right now, our focus is them, and when we go and inspect the building further, that's when we'll get a full entire client list, and we'll go client by client once we get that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments for staff or the applicant?
Sounds appropriate to me, Your Honor.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions for the applicant or staff?
No questions. I heartily support this, this agenda item.
Very good. Councilmember Del Orco, any questions or comments?
This special land use permit has been properly vetted through our planning commission. It fits within the master plan. It meets the I-2, which permits studios for musical dance and artistic instruction. I feel like due diligence has been done, and on a personal note, as a guitar player, I'd love to see this come to our community, so I'm grateful for this new business.
Come by anytime.
All right. Very good. And Councilmember Camaro Sulak, any questions or comments?
Aside from reiterating Mr. Del Orco's comments, I, I also think this is a great use for the property. Looks like there's about 48,000 square feet and ample parking. I do have a question as far as all of, all of the area being used there, will it, will there be other uses aside in addition to the, the music school, or is it going to be that large? That's quite an endeavor, and I, and I'm all for it. So are you planning on utilizing all 48,000 square feet for the music school?
Not in phase one, maybe over time, but there are a few tenants throughout the building.
Okay, great. You have a big, a big job in front of you. I-
It's a big one, yeah. Yeah, we're going to be busy. Get back to me in five or six years, I'll tell you how we're doing.
Okay, will do. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, well, if there's nothing further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve the special land use. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Alex, Karen, congratulations. Best of luck to you. Let us know what we can do to be of assistance, and we appreciate your time this evening. Bye now.
Very grateful. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
We move on to new business item 20-85. This is downtown recovery zone. We're going to begin with a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 10 2020 memo from Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green. Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move simply to acknowledge receipt?
Yes, I'll move to acknowledge, please.
Very good. And Councilmember Del Orco, would you second?
Second.
Okay, very good. It's been properly moved to simply acknowledge receipt. I think there'll probably be some discussion and question on this. Mr. Green, Assistant City Manager, do you care to provide a synopsis and then open it up for questions and comments?
Yes, sir. So as you guys know, a lot of towns throughout the state and the country are trying to get started back up, and specifically, a lot of downtowns are trying to revamp how they're doing things. One of the ways the state of Michigan is allowing us to do this is by setting up business recovery zones within our town. These zones help businesses be able to expand beyond their normal indoor capacity, allowing them to hopefully get higher traffic counts and increase their business for a short period of time. So after meeting with some members of staff, talking over with Holly at Celine Main Street, and meeting with a couple of the businesses downtown, we drew up a, a plan to hopefully help spur some business for them over the next few months by increasing their capacity. So what we're proposing is essentially closing North and South Ann Arbor Street for those two blocks, two days a week, on Fridays and Saturdays, that would allow businesses to expand until the middle of the street and allow more seating, allow more foot traffic, and hopefully overall increase their business over the next few months. So in your packet was the base layout for the plan and the permit that we would require all the businesses to fill out, and with that permit, that would also serve as the city approval for if restaurants want to expand their liquor license out to the street. So I feel like we can open up for some questions, have some good discussion, and go from there.
Very good. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, questions or comments for the Assistant City Manager?
Not at this time. I think it's straightforward. Whatever we can do to help downtown is fine with me.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell, or excuse me, Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Green. And I, I apologize because I know you sent out an updated memo this afternoon, and I wasn't sure exactly what had changed. So if I address something that has changed, please, please feel free to stop me. So I guess the business registration of which businesses are eligible for this?
It would be all of them. A lot of communities are just doing restaurants. That's the big push, is increasing seating, but the route we decided to go was essentially everyone on these couple blocks. So if you say McPherson's wanted to set up a couple tables on the sidewalk on the street to have a more display that could allow walking traffic on the street, that, that would be allowed under this.
Okay. Is there any concern that we're going to have too many people in the area? If you have people doing retail as well as restaurants and staff?
The part, part of the permitting process is you essentially have to section off your area. So the hope would be if there are enough, if there are a lot of people down there, they are separated enough between the little sections of businesses. So it's not, essentially not like a flea market where everyone's just running around Ann Arbor Street. It should be sectioned off, and they still have to meet that capacity limit.
Okay. And so does everyone get the same amount of space?
It's, it's based off of frontage on Ann Arbor Street, and if you have smaller frontage, if you get approval, written approval from another business, you can use their frontage. For example, Pineapple House doesn't plan on taking advantage of this, but if Dan's wanted to use that section and they got written approval from Pineapple House, they could.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. Are we offering any other type of recovery type services like this to businesses outside of downtown?
One thing we're exploring is specifically towards restaurants, allowing their outside seating. That's something I'm currently talking over with Tom Forshee, just because it's a little different, and we think we can just do that administratively with our current zoning compliance orders, but that's still something I'm working out with, Tom.
Okay. Then moving on, the, the fees, the registr, the registration fee is $25. Does that cover your actual administrative time?
Really, really, yeah.
Thing of like, are we operating at a loss?
For, the way we're having proposed, most likely this year, since we're asking to waive the fees, just help the businesses out some more. The application fee, that's, that's pretty standard for our minimal fees, for our minimal plans. For one of these, I feel like I could turn, turn around in half hour, an hour, depending on how complex their seating on their map they draw is.
Right.
But so that fee's very minimal, just because I don't think the turnaround time would be that long.
Okay. But then the DPW labor fees, you're saying 300 to 430, is that per day, per weekend?
That'd be per weekend. Yep, and, and I worked that out with Jeff and Priscilla and DPW, and that's just pretty much pending when we pick the barricades up, or if Celine Main Street and the businesses are able to help volunteer and like move barricades. So for example, if we end at Saturday night at 10:00 PM, and the businesses downtown are able to move the barricades up to the side of the street and essentially open the street, then DPW can come pick them up on Monday, that, that would save quite a bit of money. But if they do have to go down there on Saturday and pick them up, that's where a big increase comes in.
Right. Is there any concern, because in closing those streets, and you also have to close the left-hand turn lanes that are on Michigan Avenue, of having, you know, people, non-city people being out in traffic, putting out cones, I know they do it for like summer music series and such. Are, are they properly equipped to do that?
That's one of the reasons I also, yeah, that's one of the reasons I also pushed back the start date from June 19th, so this Friday until next Friday, besides giving the businesses more time to essentially get their staffing levels back, it'll help me be able to work with Chief and Celine Main Street to make sure all the safety protocols are there.
Okay, because if you figure this out, I mean, at the 4:30, and if we actually go the, the full recovery zone time, I mean, and we're looking at 20 weekends, I mean, that's almost $9,000 in DPW costs. I mean, that's a huge chunk for the city to just write off. I mean, there might be opportunities, I, to maybe use some of our community events dollars of events that got canceled, but I want to make sure that we're not incurring a new line item for this. I mean, there's got to be something. I mean, we've had to be diligent in budgeting, and so I think we really need to look at that, too. Obviously, it's, it's a necessary thing, and if it means that we need to, to find somewhere else in the budget, I, I just want to make sure that, that it's accounted for, because like I said, it's nominal, but not. And I know I'm running out of time, so very quickly, the other thing I wanted to ask was the recovery zone period, we're talking now from original, it was June 19th to October 31st, that's a tremendous amount of time.
Yep. The, the reason we went to October 31st is because that's what's allowed by state. So, so we figured it would be easier to come back to and cancel, cancel the recovery zone, say everyone's allowed to go back inside, they're allowed to go back to 100% capacity, and we decide, say, end of August, we don't need to do this anymore, the restaurants are happy being back inside, and we can cancel it versus coming back and asking for an extension.
Okay. Now, say it was a rainy weekend, are they still going to have the road closed?
I, I actually talked about this with Wally and Paul from Brecken and Max on Friday. The theory would be, we would plan to close it. We would at least take the barricades out there and get ready to set up and just watch the weather, because it could be a situation where it was like last Wednesday, where we had that rainstorm for an hour and a half, and then it was sunny at 7:30. And that's one of their concerns, one of their concerns was weather, but they also liked the idea of having it, having the street closed just in case an event like that happens, where after an hour rainstorm, it's sunny and they could take advantage of it again.
Right.
So that, yeah, that'd be something we just have to monitor week to week.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to just quickly ask, and then I'll, I'll, I'll pass on to the next person, it's about traffic, and right now, North Ann Arbor has a lot of truck traffic. What is going to be the route for those trucks, then, if that road is closed? Because trucks aren't allowed on Maple, so where are these trucks turning?
Chief, I may have to defer that one to you.
Are you talking northbound from the, the south end of town?
So if you were coming either east or west going on North Ann Arbor?
We would probably send them up to, I'm drawing a blank, but it'd be our parade route, would be the recommended route for our trucks. We, we have, all our roads are able to handle the truck, the weights, but we'll, we'll have to sit down and discuss that with, with Mike and the team and prefer, try to figure out what's the best route to send our trucks, and of course, communicate with them.
Right. Then what do we do with delivery trucks for those businesses there? Both of those areas are, are commercial loading zones.
Yes, and, and most of those deliveries are made pretty early in the morning, so we would hope by the time Friday comes along that those deliveries are made. Trying to think, when I'm in town for the farmer's market, I don't see too many delivery trucks on the weekend. It's predominantly Monday through Friday.
Right, but these are, you're talking about closing these roads on Fridays at 11:00 AM and Saturdays at 7:00 AM.
Yep.
So I, I want to make sure. My other concern is that the businesses that are there, like the barber shops on either side or such, they're, they're going to not have parking in front of their businesses anymore. The, the quick dash in, get a haircut, grab a cup of coffee, they've now lost that opportunity. Have they given you any feedback as to how they feel about this?
Yeah, Holly actually helped us out with this. She reached out to all the downtown businesses, and from their input, they, they don't have any issue with this right now.
Okay.
Their, their first issue wasn't really an issue, it was just a more of an information thing, telling us they're closed on Sundays, like a lot of the businesses did. That's why we moved Sundays. But yeah, as of right now, they don't seem to have any issue with this.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments?
Your Honor, it seems fairly straightforward to me.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to point out for anybody who's tuning in, some residents, that I'm very pleased with the times that we're not going to go later than 10:00 PM, and, you know, families can have their time together. And just to, to talk to Ms. Dillon's point a little bit, this is a really unusual situation. We've never had a pandemic before. Our businesses are hurting, and so in my mind, the $10,000 is well worth finding in the budget. We don't have, that will not put a strain on our restricted, our unrestricted reserves. I heartily support waiving all the fees. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Mike Green is, I'm just curious to know if there was any consideration given to the amount of square feet for the variation of storefrontage. You said earlier that it was based on the storefrontage that the different businesses would have, so I'm wondering if the capacity is- So I'm wondering if the capacity is capped based on the amount of square feet that they'll be allotted in the street? And if proper egresses are provided in the event of, for, you know, has Chief Heft been consulted about fire safety and these concerns?
Yes. Yep. I, I had a chance to talk it over with Chief Hart and Chief Heft. Uh, at, at the current moment, neither of them have major concerns, uh, since we're not placing, essentially we're not placing large tents out there or anything. So anything that would have to be moved and an emergency event can very, very easily get moved. And our plan is to have a specific designated area for a vehicle just in case. Um, yes. So I think we got that part nailed down.
So were there limitations based on number of people, number of tables to maintain social distancing and, and throughout all of this?
Yeah, that, that's part of the reason we asked them to include essentially a diagram of how they're going to have everything set up. Uh, it's similar to when we ask, uh, for people that place chairs on sidewalks. Uh, besides just looking to keep everything ADA accessible, now we're going to be looking to make sure everything is six feet apart.
Okay, very good. Um, the other question I had is have we heard from the, the folks, the, whether it's Slane, Slane Main Street or Chamber of Commerce about Thursday night music series, has that been canceled? Because if that is still going on and we'll have effectively closed the streets for half the week. I, I'm just wondering about that one piece.
From my understanding, it has been canceled.
Okay, okay. And Oktoberfest?
I don't know about that.
Yeah. We don't know about that yet. Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, I, I really want to move forward with these plans and everything we can do to help our struggling businesses is going to be greatly appreciated uh, by both our, our patrons, residents and business owners. And I, um, I wholeheartedly approve moving forward with this.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I, I, I like this plan, uh, the details and anything we can do to help, help our businesses. A couple of quick questions. Um, how, for, uh, Mr. Green, how are we handling any potential non-business traffic? That as far as other pedestrians that are not, uh, patronizing the, you know, the businesses? I'm just concerned that I don't want other people to come in and, you know, feel the energy, the positivity that we have in downtown. And for that to affect our downtown businesses, for them to have, you know, to hold, um, and take advantage of this, this additional space. So how is that addressed?
Yeah. So that, that's actually going to be a good working, the way we're going to work through that is with the businesses. Cause at the end of the day, we're gonna, we're gonna have to rely on them to help enforce that. So we're not going to be sitting down there all day. Um, so, so one of the big, one of the big ways we're going to help with that is ensuring the sidewalks are clear. And making sure they are clearly marked for that as pedestrian traffic. Uh, so people are not walking through the middle of the street, just in between people eating at tables or browsing tables that other businesses have laid out. So, so it's gonna be, it's just gonna be a working group with us and the businesses.
Okay. Um, does that mean that we won't need any, uh, public safety assistance to make sure that, you know, businesses and people are complying and that everything, you know, I, I don't want there to be tempers flaring because, you know, people have their different, uh, comfort levels of social, of social distancing. And I know it's gonna, I know this is a, is a, is a fluid situation and, and I'm all, and I'm all for it. Um, I'm just concerned it, you know, if, uh, this is gonna impact our, our, you know, our public safety officers.
Yeah, completely understandable. And, and as both me and Chief have mentioned, over the next two weeks, we, we're going to work on all those details and I'm sure we can get something to you.
Okay. Uh, very good. And then lastly, so for the businesses on the north and south side of Michigan Avenue, especially, uh, you know, right there at the four corners. Uh, I guess I'm concerned those parking spaces that are in front of those, you know, that are in front of the businesses, like in front of Comerica, in front of Saline Optometry and the, you know, the, the, the Chamber and those businesses there. Uh, they rely on those parking spots for their customers to, you know, some of them to just, you know, have curbside, you know, pickups. Or, or, you know, or drop people, or drop people off. Um, how, how, how is that being addressed so that those spaces aren't going to be now all of a sudden, you know, filled up? Because those businesses need, need assistance as well.
Yeah, that's something we can explore. I, I'm not sure if the city's ever done it in the past, putting traffic, traffic control orders on Michigan Ave. So that's something I might have to defer to Chief.
Yeah, and that is an M dot road, obviously. So, um, I think it's just trying to find that balance, right, between, uh, everyone's competing interests. Uh, we can also direct people to parking lot one to drop folks off at the, uh, optometrist or to the chiropractor or what have you. Um, it's going to be kind of a, a work in progress on how we can try to deal with some of these issues that come up. Uh, as you are all asking, uh, very good questions. And really it's kind of an unknown, uh, because I believe it was Councilmember Mitchell that brought up, you know, this is our first pandemic, at least in my lifetime that I've dealt with. And, uh, you know, we're just going to kind of have to ebb and flow and try to find the best way that works out, uh, for everyone here.
All right, very good. Well, I'm, I'm satisfied. I, I think a lot of different angles have been considered and we will be able to, to work through as, as, as need be. So I fully support, I fully support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, and let me echo that support. Uh, as I indicated, I believe two, two, three months ago, I think that in light of recent events, it's absolutely essential um, that we show flexibility and understanding, not only to our residents, but to our business owners. And that we try to a, a accommodate and help them the best we can. So I am fully in support of this initiative and in waiving the fees. Uh, as to, I, I think a question that Councilwoman Dillon asked and Assistant City Manager Green responded to. I do look forward to seeing, um, another proposal reference restaurants elsewhere in the community. And I will note for council's benefit that, uh, late last week, I also received a inquiry from a local business about relaxing, um, our sign ordinance. So that's not a decision that I can make or staff can make. So that will subsequently be brought back to city council for your consideration. Um, so with that, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Del Orco to simply acknowledge receipt. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Would say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And now a motion to approve.
Excuse me, Mayor, before you move on, I, I have just one other clarification question can I ask? And I wanted to follow up on something that you and I talked about that's I think relative to this. Could I do that before we go to the motion?
Um, yeah, quickly, please.
Okay. Just, just, Mr. Green, just quickly. So businesses that are not on Ann Arbor Street, they still can have space on Ann Arbor Streets?
I'd have to, I'll have to reread my permit tomorrow. Uh, the way I believe I have it written is you essentially have to be in this down, in the deep, in the downtown district. And then you have to get written permission from that business owner to use their storefrontage.
Right. Because I mean, we have several, like the barbecue place, we've got rock, paper, scissors, earth elements, Benny's Bakery, that don't have frontage to that, that are in the downtown. So I want to make sure that they're also being, you know, getting the opportunity to participate.
Yep. And, and that's why I believe I included that. I just had double check permit and.
Okay. I just wanted that clarification. And then Mayor, the other thing that you and I spoke about, it's sort of rel- it's relative to the downtown. Would you rather me save it for, I know discussion portion is, is very long. It's just a really quick ask of Mr. Green.
Yeah, do, do it now.
So, Mr. Green, what I was wondering is would there be any opportunity to explore a partnership with the owner of 147 Michigan Avenue? And essentially ask them for whatever the ask is, you know, the city maintain it or whatever for a brief period of time. Utilizing that property as sort of open seating, uh, maybe put some park benches there. There are a lot of people that want to support the downtown businesses, especially the restaurants, but aren't at the comfort level yet to go to them. And this would be more of, you pick up your curbside and we've got some socially distant public space where you can eat without having to drive all the way back home. Um, I know Brighton is, is utilizing that model. And it's just really conducive if we could make it work, I mean, because of the logistics of where that space is. And so I, I would just, my ask is, is there an opportunity to explore that?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Green, I can give you Natalie Gunther, who's the deed holders proper contact information tomorrow. I don't see any harm in reaching out to her to see if something could be facilitated and we can report back at an upcoming council meeting. Can't guarantee what the response will be, but we can at a minimum reach out.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, all right, let's proceed to a, a motion to approve or not to approve. This will be a motion to approve the downtown business recovery plan as submitted. Uh, Mr. Gearbaugh, would you move to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Very good. And, uh, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, would you second?
I will very happily second.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamara Sulek to approve. I believe we've exhausted, uh, or we have no more discussion. Uh, if you do have a, an additional question or comment, please show, uh, show me a hand. Otherwise we'll proceed to vote. Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The, uh, third motion will be a motion to waive or not to waive the DPW fees and to waive or not to waive the $25 application fee. I believe from the discussion, Councilwoman Mitchell indicated that she'd be partial to waiving. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move to waive and waive?
So move, Your Honor.
Very good. And, uh, Councilmember CEO, would you second?
Second.
Very good. Uh, any discussion on this motion to waive and waive? Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh?
Uh, none for me.
Okay. Councilwoman Dillon?
No.
Uh, Councilmember CEO?
Oh, sir.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
No.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
No.
I jumped by order there. My apologies. Councilmember Del Orco?
No.
Okay. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mitchell, seconded by CEO to waive and to waive. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Green, thank you very much for your work on this. Uh, we move on now to new business item 20-86. This is a ward of dam inspection. This will be a motion to acknowledge the June 9th, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice and to approve and award or not to approve the 2020 dam inspection to Spicer Group in the amount of $3,500. Uh, Councilwoman Dillon, would you move to acknowledge and approve an award? You're muted.
Sorry, I clicked it muted myself. Yes, I will move to, to acknowledge an, an award.
Very good. And Councilmember Del Orco, would you second?
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge and to approve and to award. Uh, DPW Director, City Engineer Fordice, do you care to make any comment before we entertain questions and discussion?
Uh, just real quick, um, we, uh, posted that it's not admitted, uh, for a standard, uh, dam inspection. And then on top of that standard, uh, inspection checklist, also asked, uh, for a, a additional hydraulic analysis with some, uh, more current updated climate forecasts. Um, there's a, a growing concern in kind of the stormwater industry of facilities being overwhelmed by, uh, more intense storms, larger storms. Um, so I thought it was, uh, this would be a good time to take a look at the, some of the best available precipitation forecasts and compare those with our, our dam's hydraulic capacity. And, uh, make sure we don't have any issues coming up. Um, we did, um, receive two bids, um, this, um, Spicer Group submitted a, uh, it seemed like an aggressive price, so I went over the scope forth with them and they submitted a clarification with, uh, everything included. And, uh, and, uh, Phil Westmoreland and, uh, Kevin Wilks are, uh, on the meeting if we have any questions to him directly.
Very good. Uh, please, uh, Mr. Fordice, the gentlemen again who are joining us, their names?
Phil Westmoreland and Kevin Wilk.
Gentlemen, we welcome you here. And, uh, when we do a round of questions, there may be questions for you. So, uh, please hang, uh, please hang tight. Um, and Mr. Fordice, just for, for your edification, there's, I'm getting a little bit of feedback when you speak.
I'll try to figure out what to do about that.
Kind of a fuzzy buzzing noise. Um, Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh, any questions or comments for our city engineer or our guests?
Um, I don't believe so. I think moving this forward is a great idea. Um, one thing Jeff, I noticed in the proposal, it talked about a dive inspection isn't needed at this time. What would determine when that is needed?
Um, I think typically that's for, um, high hazard dams, um, but, uh, perhaps folks from Spicer could, uh, chime in on that.
Gentlemen, you care to elaborate on that point?
Uh, yes, this is Kevin Wilks from Spicer Group. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly, Kevin.
Um, I wanted to add that we also have Rich Graham from Spicer Group is on the call. He's the, he'll be the perfect, the licensed professional engineer, um, the engineer of record for the dam inspection. Um, so he might be able to clarify a little bit more than me. But it's pretty much, I think, just what Mr. Fordice pointed out, it's more of the higher risk dams. We didn't see any reason to believe that it needed a dive inspection at this point. And we just wanted to make that clarification for the sake of our, um, proposal that it's.
No, thank you. That's, I was just curious because not knowing how they do those type of inspections and understanding what we currently have. I didn't think it was that big of a concern that we'd have to do it at this point. So thank you for clarifying.
Absolutely.
That's it for me, Mayor. Well, I'm done.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Um, the timeframe, Jeff?
Uh, this should be done by middle of July.
It should be done by the middle of July? Is that, I'm sorry?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilman CEO?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um, Jeff, can I just confirm that this inspection is going, I, I assume it would, but I want to make sure. Is it going to look at the current height of the water versus the height that was intended at the time the dam was built?
Um, I'm not really sure the, the, the height of the water is, is determined by the spillway height, you know, so that, that hasn't changed. Um, what we are looking at is how much water can flow over that spillway and, and through the gates when they're open? And, and that to forecasts, future forecasts of changes in precipitation.
You're right. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you for clarifying my question. Um, and then I just, I want to note for the public that, you know, the, the inspection that's certified by uh, state regulation is $3,500. Um, the city has put this inspection off in past years and, and I see no reason at that nominal fee that it should not be performed every three years according to state regulation. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Del Orco, any questions?
Nothing at this time. I'd like to move forward with this inspection as intended.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, I'm very glad that, that this came, this went out, uh, and came back so quickly. So thank you to the Spicer Group. Um, considering that we have 660 feet of embankment length is, how is that looked at in this, in this inspection? Because it, it's not just the, uh, the, the spillway gate. Um, how, and I know their saturation rates and I, I appreciate all the information that was provided in the, um, RFP. Uh, but can one of you gentlemen from Spicer just briefly, uh, comment on how that 660 feet is, is analyzed and is, is inspected for safety standards for the, for the state?
I think for this, I want to, sorry, is there somebody else?
You're good, Kevin.
If we can get Rich on the call, I think I want to punt this question to him. He's more of the, um, like I said, he's the licensed professional for the, the actual inspection. So I think he'd be better suited to answer if he can, um, be unmuted.
Yep. Let's ask the clerk to please unmute, uh, Rich.
Thank you, Kevin. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to thank the council for listening during, hearing discussion on our proposal. Um, to answer your question, uh, what we look for on an embankment or an earthen embankment like you're, uh, describing. Um, we look primarily, it's a visual inspection. So we're not doing any type of geotechnical borings or any type of analysis with, uh, you know, core samples. Um, what we're looking for primarily is any type of surface erosion, any type of rodent holes or muskrat holes that might be, uh, undermining the, uh, foundation of the embankment. Um, so, uh, I guess to circle back, uh, it's more of a visual inspection. It's not, uh, in-depth, uh, dig a hole, look at the soil type of inspection.
Okay. So is, uh, is it safe to assume that it's a certain soil type that was originally used? That it's, that it's sound and, and, and. That it's, that it's sound and, and not moving that just a visual inspection from the surface is sufficient?
Absolutely. For the most part, you know, these dams, and I, once again, we, we haven't been awarded the proposal, but I'm assuming your dam was built with a clay embankment which resists the penetration of water. And in turn, you know, we can, most of the time with visual indicators, determine if there's any type of movement of the soils, any type of seepage, we're looking down at the downstream side of the embankment to look for any water coming through. And most of the time, those are the indicators that, you know, would, you'd first see if there's any type of failure.
Okay, very good. I'm, I'm just really concerned because of, obviously in light of recent events, but also, you know, this is Michigan Avenue in a major thorough way. So I, I appreciate the level of detail and I'm, I'm in support of this proposal.
Very good. Gentlemen, we appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Fordice, thank you for moving expeditiously on this. It is important and timely and I'm strongly in favor of the motion that's on the floor. If there's nothing further, we do have a motion moved by Dillon, seconded by Del Arco to acknowledge, to approve and to award. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, thank you again for your time this evening. We look forward to your analysis. We move on to new business item 20-87. This is a ward of woodland drive reconstruction. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 12, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice, and to approve and award or not to approve the 2020 woodland drive improvement project as, to asphalt specialties, excuse me, in the amount of $683,496 and to authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, would you be willing to acknowledge, approve and award?
Yes, just as you stated.
Okay, very good. And Councilmember Kamara Sulek, would you second?
I'll second.
Very good. It's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge, to approve and to award. Mr. Fordice, do you care to give a brief overview before we open it up for discussion and questions?
Yeah, just real quick, we had a number of contractors look at the, the bid package and we had three, three, three really good responses. The, the low bid at the $683,000 is, is a, is a nice amount below what we were estimating for construction. So we're very pleased with that. It is the same contractor that's working on Kevlin and River Oaks that started today. So I think that created some savings for them and some efficiencies. And they are proposing a, a much faster schedule than, than we had put in the contract. So this will allow us to minimize impact on the rec center and we should have this piece of woodland done before the roundabout is completed. So very excited about that. We, Dan Kabaj with Fleece and Vanderbink, the design engineer, is on the line if we have any particular questions for him.
Very good. Dan, thank you for being with us this evening. Please hold tight. We'll do a round of questions. And also if council members have comments, I would welcome those as well. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, I'll begin with you. And if you'd want to acknowledge whether your question is for our guest from Fleece and Vanderbink or DPW Director Fordice?
I really don't have any questions. I just am glad that this is moving forward. That section of woodland has been a very broken up aspect. And I know the businesses that surround it are looking forward for this being moved ahead and glad that we could get it done in this season considering everything that's happening with all the other projects. Thank you, Jeff.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Girba. Councilmember, Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, have you notified the local businesses beyond the rec center of this project?
The, the rec center is the only property really with front within the scope of work. And all the other businesses south of there are, you know, dealing with the, the roundabout closure in the same way. So the notification and communication that's going out about the roundabout pretty much covers this as well. So.
Okay, that's awesome. My only other question was, and I, I know we've talked about this before, but can you remind me? I thought that the part of the reason that that road deteriorated to the level it's at now was there was some infrastructure issues with it?
The, the reason for failure has been kind of a, an ongoing debate. You know, was it the asphalt mix? Was it the subgrade? Was it drainage? We're pretty darn certain it's not drainage. So this is a slow reconstruct. So every component of the roadway is being replaced. So regardless of why it failed in the past, it will be fixed. We did do geotechnical borings beforehand to, to analyze the existing pavement structure, the existing subgrade, native material below that, and designed a new pavement system based on those geotechnical results. So we should be pretty solid.
Is there any sidewalk involved in this project or is it just roadway?
It is just roadway. Yeah, there's no new additional sidewalk. We have sidewalk running the full eastern edge of this along the front of the rec center and then into the northern part of Tuff Park.
Right, and that doesn't have to be replaced?
No. The, the drive approaches at the rec center, those are being replaced. So that little piece of sidewalk that causes each of those drive, those three drives will be replaced.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, either between yourself or I could certainly assist with this or our Business Ambassador, City Treasurer Bennett, to piggyback on something Councilwoman Dillon said. I think it would be a best practice to, at a minimum, send an obligatory email to our friends at DAVCO and MMI just to make them aware that in addition to a roundabout a half a mile north of them, that we will be resurfacing that section of woodland drive beginning, you know, shortly, just north of their properties. Again, I don't think it's necessary, but I do think it's a best practice and indicative of an, of an organization that strives to do, not the bare minimum, but, but go that, an organization that, that does more for its, for its customers and businesses. Councilwoman, or Councilman CEO?
No questions, Your Honor, no comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any questions. I just want to say I'm, I'm, as hard as it is to say that I'm pleased about a $683,500 contract. This came in lower than what we were thinking we would have to look at before. So I'm really excited. This project was bid out and it's a savings to the city. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Del Arco?
Yeah, I will second Councilwoman Mitchell's comments and that I'm very grateful this was sent out for bid and it's coming in lower than we expected. It's as much needed improvement to our city's infrastructure and I'm in support of this.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I, I'm also really glad that these, that these bids went out and came back so quickly. Just, just like with the dam, it's, it's nice to have this information come in. Been waiting for quite a while for this. And much better than having a no, a no bid and saving, you know, over, you know, $250,000, understanding that it's, you know, piggybacking on the other, on the other projects. Other question I have is, is the estimated start date is July 6th. And Mr. Fordice, you said it will be quicker than anticipated. How much quicker? What timeframe do you, is the expectation that it'll be completed?
We were looking at a five to six week project in the contract, but the, the contractor is proposing closer to three weeks of construction time.
I, I really like the sounds of that, along with the, the cost savings. Thank you, and I fully support this.
Very good.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Well, prior to COVID-19 and the rec center being shuttered, I used to drive that, that stretch of road probably every day, at least five, six times a day. And as has been noted by my colleagues and staff, it's in pretty abysmal shape. I'd also note that while that section of road is in the north end of our industrial park and it's well-used by both our businesses and by our residents. So doing a total reconstruct will be a noticeable improvement for a, a great many in our community. I'm also very pleased that this came in under bid. It's, it's a substantial amount, but it could have been more. So I'm eager to move forward on this and excited, in addition, I'm excited that the contractor will be able to move expeditiously and weather permitting, complete the project hopefully by the end of July, beginning of August. So very much in favor of the motion. There is a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Pro Tem Girba, seconded by Councilmember Kamara Sulek to acknowledge, to approve and award. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeff. Moving on now to new business item 20-88, mausoleum window restoration. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 9, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice and to approve or not to approve an increase of $37, $3,752 for replacement window frames for the oakwood mausoleum stained glass windows. Councilwoman Mitchell, would you be amenable to acknowledging and approving?
Yes, sir. So moved.
Very good. And Councilmember Del Arco, would you second?
Second.
Very good. Director Fordice, do you care to comment?
Just very excited to be in the final legs of this restoration project that is drawn out a little longer than we would like. But we are very near the finish line here. This change was predicted in all the proposals that we had leading up to this point that there was a certain part of the window that just could not be evaluated while it was in place. And that's the, the outer frame. When they were removed, those outer frames eventually just fell apart. There's, there was nothing left to restore, repair, so they had to be completely replaced. Went back and forth a little bit on what would be the best replacement and settled on basically a traditional wood frame made out of white oak and weatherproofed with oil-based primer and paint. And that's, this is a lot for that, that new frame.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, any questions or comments?
Jeff, just understanding, what's the expected lifespan if we maintain those windows properly? Or what are we doing in terms of precaution to make sure that these new frames last?
Well, they are fairly well shielded just by the, the shape of the building itself. But keeping, keeping fresh paint on them, you can easily get 50-plus years out of this type of framing.
And we're no longer going to put any kind of plastic outside storm window or anything else, correct?
Well, the proposal does include a protective window pane to prevent physical damage to the windows. That has, the production of that was delayed when the manufacturing facility was shut down during the pandemic. We expect those to be installed opening June 26. And at the moment, the old plexiglass ones have been reinstalled just as a temporary measure to prevent any physical damage to the windows.
Those are already in?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Mayor Pro Tem Girba?
No, I'm good.
Good. Councilwoman Dillon?
I think Mr. Girba just asked my questions, which was about the plexiglass overlay. And, but then just for clarification, because see, someone did post a picture that it looks like the windows, so they are currently installed?
Yeah, there's still some work to be done with caulking and painting and installing the, the protective glazing, but the windows themselves are there.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Councilman CEO?
Thank you for bringing this long-term project to a final end.
Very happy to.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for, for residents watching, the plexiglass had been applied a number of years ago, quite some time. And the plexiglass, it, it did protect the stained glass from breakage from outside, but unfortunately it caused a faster rotting process to the window frame. So I really appreciate Mr. Girba and Ms. Dillon asking about the plexiglass. And I'm looking forward to, to seeing them with the new frames. I did pop down to the cemetery, I think it was Friday or Saturday, and it was very exciting to see these. So I'd like to thank Mr. Fordice for his work on this project.
Very good. Councilmember Del Arco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jeff, just to clarify, the protective pane that's being applied to this window will not be plexiglass and will not have that same water erosion effect to the wood frames as the previous solution did?
Correct. It's, it has, it's a tempered glass material with a, an aluminum frame in a, in a dark bronze color that will kind of hopefully visually disappear as much as possible. And then it is spaced away from the, the framing so that there's airflow behind it to prevent any sort of condensation buildup.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. I'm grateful to see this project come to a completion and I'm sure Ms. Mary Hess will be as well.
Yes.
Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also very relieved to see this come to fruition. And I, I think Mary Hess and a number of our city residents will be very glad for, for this. Thank you for everybody's work on this and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Mr. Fordice, anything else you'd like to add?
Just one point of interest. When the windows were at the shop getting restored, they discovered that part of the framing around the stained glass is actually copper that had previously been covered with paint. So they removed that paint and left some of the patina of age on that copper. So there will be, there should be a pretty nice new look to the, to the windows when we get a chance to look at them.
Very good. Excellent. Appreciate your work on this. There's a motion on the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Del Arco to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-89, police contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 9, 2020 memo from City Manager Campell and to approve or not to approve the employment contract for Police Chief Hart for a period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 and to authorize, not authorize, the mayor, city clerk, city manager to execute the employment contract as submitted. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, would you move to acknowledge, approve and authorize?
I'm happy to acknowledge, approve and authorize.
Very good. And Councilmember CEO, would you second?
I certainly would.
Very good. City Manager Campell, do you care to make a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to report, which is no surprise, I'm sure to anybody, but Chief Hart did receive very high marks and so very thankful for his service to the police department, to our community and it's exciting to see as he continues to move the police department forward. We did sit down per the agreement 90 days prior to negotiate different terms. We did, we actually had negotiated a step increase, unfortunately, because, you may recall, because of the budget that was just passed due to the COVID restrictions on the budget, financially that is. There's a pay freeze and so it no longer has a pay increase. However, upon further discussion with Chief Hart, he'd requested and I, I think it's a good idea for one additional week of vacation. And, and I, and one of the stipulations is that he actually has to use it. As we know that he, he works, puts in a lot, it's a lot of time to our organization and our community. And so again, we're thankful for that, but he certainly, I know we all know that he, he needs to take some time to himself and his family. But anyway, this would be an additional week. However, it would be a use or lose it, meaning what I mean by that is it would not be included in his annual bank. So by current policy, an employee can, can keep up to two years of bank time. And then at the end of the fiscal year, upon the end of the fiscal year, if they have some hours or days left over that exceed that to your banks and they get paid out. So this would not, he would not be able to get paid out if he doesn't use it. But, but he would, the idea would be that he would continue to have this extra week of vacation going forward in, in future years as well.
Very good. Chief Hart, do you care to make any comment this evening?
Other than the fact that I absolutely enjoy being your chief of police here, I, I know that we have much work ahead of us, but I appreciate your confidence and, and trust in me. And I look forward to serving you for another year in our community.
Thank you for your service and your leadership. It is, it is acknowledged and greatly appreciated, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Girba, any questions or comments for either the chief or city manager?
No comments. I appreciate everything the chief has done this past year. His professionalism and his approach to everything has been outstanding. He's dealt with some issues that have, have saved us significant money and addressed concerns that I think would not have been resolved if it wasn't for your abilities and your skills to do that. I'm fine with the week vacation. I think you need to take that time. You need to not burn out and that's an appropriate thing for you to do this year. And also I'm glad we could move forward with a deputy chief for you to be able to continue to make these. forward with a deputy chief for you to be able to continue to make these improvements and making us a better community for all of our citizens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. No questions, just a comment. I just wanted to thank the chief and looking forward to another year's service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Seo?
My heartfelt thanks and congratulations, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. No questions. I just want to say, Chief, I still say that you're one of the best hires. We, that was one of the best decisions I think the city's ever made. I want to thank you for your your time. I know you are an A-plus person in a C-plus world, and I I'm very happy to support that vacation time, especially because I emailed you personally asking when the last time was you took a vacation, because we all need that time to refresh. And I also appreciate and have heard comments around the community, especially these days when we have some police practices that are so troubling, and I do not have those worries here. I have every confidence in you and the people that you you that you lead in such a a strong manner. So I'm I'm just very grateful, and I'm happily looking for another year with you as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Thank you, Mayor Marl. Chief Hart, I want to thank you for your exemplary exemplary leadership. You've brought a lot to the Saline community, and you've transformed the police department, and that is no small task. That is not trivial. I thank you for your supportive management through empathy and compassion. You care very deeply about your staff and the people that work for you, and that goes a long way, and it helps the morale there. So I am wholeheartedly in support of approving this contract.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief Hart. I'm going to continue on the line of major kudos. Jim took my exemplary. But I will say, you you are all of that and such a good role model for the rest of your department, our community, and it was especially apparent during the the silent protest on how you engaged with the community in planning, talking with all the all the different questions that you had, from council, from from the public. I received so many compliments, and I I this is one of the major win for the city and optics, and makes me feel makes me feel proud. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for your for your service. Look forward to the next year, two years. But please take time to recharge so that you can continue at at your best and have a good work-life balance, because we need you, and thank you.
Thank you. And I think that Mayor Protem Gierba did make an excellent point. You know, your support for the deputy chief's position, I can't even express how excited I I am about that and for your support. So thank you all, and I'm very proud to be a part of an excellent team here in the city of Saline.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Kamara Sulek, seconded by Seo to acknowledge receipt, to approve, and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item twenty-ninety, city manager separation agreement. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the employee separation waiver and release agreement to authorize, not authorize, the mayor clerk to execute the agreement as submitted. Mayor Protem Gierba, would you move to approve and to authorize?
So moved.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon, would you be willing to second?
Yes, I will second.
Very good. Just a brief comment. I do want to acknowledge and thank those who worked on this initiative. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Campbell, twelve years of twelve-plus years of service with me with the city of Saline. I'm cognizant of of a statistic that I think I've shared with most of you, which is that, you know, the national average for a city manager is about four and a half years. In Michigan, it's a little less than that. It's closer to four. Mr. Campbell has more than tripled that, and he should be immensely proud of his tenure here and all of the things that he's accomplished. On behalf of myself, the city, we wish you the best, Mr. Campbell. And I also want to acknowledge, because when you're in a senior leadership position like a city manager, it requires sacrifice not only from you, but also from your family and your your loved ones. And so I want to acknowledge your wife and three kids, because it's not always easy to to be married or to have a father that's in a senior executive position like like you have been. And I know that they have been supportive and loving to you, and I also know, because you and I've spoken about this, that you wouldn't have gotten to this point in your life without without their support. So I wanted to be sure to take some time this evening to acknowledge them. Is there anything that you would like to say this evening, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very humbled, and again, thank you so much for taking the time to to mention my family, because it is a team sport, and without them, I couldn't have gotten this far for sure. But I just said a huge heartfelt thank you to to council, to our team, our team members. I mean, we're all a team, but our employees. And we have a great team, as we've heard already a few times by council members and staff members, and couldn't could not begin to provide the quality of services that we do currently provide to our residents and our businesses without every single member of the team. And again, just as a lot of you have heard me say when I address groups, is that this is a distinct honor and pleasure to serve as a city manager for the city of Saline. And again, it's been a blessing to do it this long. And so I'm getting very thankful and humbled, and I just appreciate the opportunity to to serve the residents of this great community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments? Mr. Mayor Protem Gierba?
Mr. Campbell, I just want to say that I enjoyed working with you, the take the satisfaction and leaving us in a very fiscally responsible approach. You've accomplished some very significant projects, namely the US twelve renovation in twenty sixteen, which was, I think, one of the biggest problems, or not problems, I don't want to say, one of the biggest tests we've taken on. And I think you can leave here knowing that we appreciate all the work you've done for us as a community. Thank you.
You.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to just acknowledge Mr. Campbell and tell him, tell you my sincere appreciation for your many years of service to the city of Saline. I wish you well in all your future endeavors, and best wishes to you and your family.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Seo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Campbell. It's been my pleasure and my honor to have known you over the years as a as a friend, as a coworker, as a supervisor, and thank you for all the help you've been, like my other colleagues mentioned, in getting us, you know, through some of these rough spots, and yet we're still in fiscally good financial shape. So that's all a credit to your leadership and ability, and I thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Campbell, I just want to say thank you as well. You and your family have been in my thoughts and prayers, and I will be thinking good things and wishing good things for you and your family, and I hope you stay in touch.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for all you've been able to accomplish for the city of Saline and and your passionate service to our community. There are many areas where you have guided us through some difficult times, and I I'm grateful that the mayor brought up your family, because it is a family commitment to serve in the role that you've served for the time that you have for for twelve long years, and I'm sure that they have had to make significant sacrifices along the way. So I wish you best of luck in all matters of life.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Yes, thank you, and I as well. Thank you for your years of service, all the challenging ups and downs of your of your position, and that the city has had over the twelve-plus years. And I wish you and your family the best in your next endeavors, and and I hope you'll update us on, you know, what you what you do next, and I truly wish you the best. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you all for your comments. Mr. Campbell, thank you again. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Gierba, seconded by Dillon, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item twenty-ninety-one. This is temporary policy change for Rec Center membership. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June eighth, twenty-twenty memo from Parks and Recs Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the temporary policy changes as submitted. Let's begin with just a motion to acknowledge receipt. Mr. Seo, would you move to acknowledge receipt? Thank you. And Councilmember Del Orco, would you second that?
Okay.
Very good. They're properly moved and seconded to simply acknowledge receipt. Director Scruggs, do you want to comment on your memo of June the eighth?
Yes, just for some clarification, the rules and policies for the Rec Center for memberships, for refunds and things like that, those are all policies that are approved by city council. And the last time we did an update to those rules and policies was in two thousand seventeen. But as we approach reopening, I've I've had several conversations with, like by email and, you know, phone messages from people that are maybe not comfortable coming back to the Rec Center just yet. They may be seniors in that high-risk category. They may have younger children. And I thought it would be prudent to approach city council to get a kind of a temporary policy change regarding refunds. So currently, in order to get a refund on prepaid annual memberships is to, if you're relocating out of state or out of the area, or for a medical condition. And then on our on our recurring billing memberships, there's no refunds on those whatsoever until after they can cancel their 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 contract after a twelve-month period. So in doing this, I, you know, was was thinking of different options that we could offer. Obviously, we don't want a mass exodus of people. I don't know if that's going to happen, or, I mean, the feeling that I'm getting as talking to people, they're they're anxious to come back to the Rec Center to to take classes, to, you know, get in, use the machines and swim, and so on and so forth. But I do think that we need to make some provisions for those that can't come back, perhaps, because of their their category of high risk, or they're not comfortable or whatnot. So I came up with a couple of options for a temporary change for for the policy. I don't think this is something that we want for a long-term change. But one is to offer to keep their membership on hold, which currently all members are on hold right now. And once we get the go-ahead to reopen and we, you know, open our doors, we're going to reactivate those memberships and tack on the amount of days they have that we've been closed onto their onto their membership. And so, so if, but if they're not comfortable, one of the options is to continue them to stay on hold until they're comfortable coming back, or until, and I picked a date, January first, twenty-twenty-one, to make that decision, or to offer their prorated membership, that they could keep that money on account, because they could potentially then take fitness classes, they could take, you know, other tennis lessons, or there may might be some opportunity for them to do some other things, or to go ahead and offer the the prorated membership, whatever they have left on their membership, with the twenty-five-dollar admin fee, which is what we currently have. So I just, I'm asking for, I guess, approval to go move forward with adding these options into our membership rules and policies. And again, this would be a temporary change until January first, twenty-twenty-one. If we need to extend it beyond that, I would come back to council at that point and say, you know, I feel that we're still in a risky situation where we do need to extend that. But I felt that was a good opportunity, a way to get people to, you know, to to get their their refunds.
Good. Thank you for working on this, Director Scruggs. I know you and I have had a number of conversations, but we're both eager, I think many of us are eager, to reopen the Rec Center. But, you know, again, in keeping with a statement I made in reference to another issue earlier this evening, we want to show flexibility, and we want to be accommodating as much as possible to to our customers, residents, and business owners. So I I support your approach, and again, appreciate your your work and analysis on this. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Mayor Protem Gierba, questions for Director Scruggs?
None at this time. I think Carla understands her business and knows what the issue is. I think there is going to be the concern that some individuals just won't be able to afford to continue, and whatever we can do, and not knowing how to open it up, giving them the number of options is the most appropriate thing to do. And thank you for your work on it, Carla.
Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Councilwoman Dillon?
So, thank you. Mr. Scruggs, I'm just trying to figure out, so do we require, like, medical verification that they're unable to come back, or is it just sort of, we're just letting you, if you want, if you're not at a level where you want to come back?
You know, I typically, not not COVID-related, but if there is a medical condition, we do ask for a doctor's note or whatnot, or a relocation, hey, I'm being transferred or whatnot. In this situation, I wouldn't ask for that. I think I think everyone is being pretty honest and upfront, you know, what if if they're comfortable coming back, they're going to come back. If they're absolutely, hey, we're still quarantining, or we're still trying to, you know, not be around a lot of people, I completely get it. So no, we would not ask for any type of verification, other than their word that, you know, they're not ready to come back.
Okay, um, I guess, so this is going to be very, I just want to make sure that we're not opening a door to, like you're saying, a mass exit, or people that normally would have been bound by a contract that are now able to get out of it. And I guess I'm, I understand from the member's side, because there are a lot of issues. There are people that are not comfortable coming in. There may be people that come in and then decide that this is overwhelming for me, and I'm not ready for this. And so I guess I just want to be as specific as possible that, because this will sort of supersede anything else, correct?
Yes.
I mean, so theoretically, at this point, anybody could cancel their membership to the Rec Center.
If they
Utilizing COVID as the reason.
That is, that is the risk.
Right. And, I mean, are you concerned as far as what this is, how this is going to impact your budget? I mean, obviously, it's it's very much an unknown as to how many, but, like I said, once you've opened this door, you don't know how many people are going to go through it.
That that is all of the concerns that I have. But we do need to honestly, I think people will be honest about it. I'm hoping, you know, rather than find it as an excuse, it's it's more of, I really am not comfortable coming back. I don't go to grocery stores or whatnot, and I I'm not going to be using my my membership. This is a personal conversation that we'll be having. Our membership clerk, myself, Jody, potentially, we would all be, I guess, counseling with everyone, saying, hey, you know, what's your concern? Maybe we can answer some of those questions, you know, and try to give some reassurance if if they have a concern about how it's going to work or whatnot. We would want to talk with everyone that does have this request, and maybe we can counsel with them to make them more comfortable and give it a try. You know, the the plans that we have in place, I think, are very, very solid as far as how we can keep everyone social distance, how we can get people into the pool with a reservation system, how we can accommodate a lot of the the personal workouts that that people are missing and want. So we would, we would have that conversation with them before just, you know, issuing the refund, and trying to and trying to help them, you know, figure out what's the best best method. you know, issuing the refund and trying to and trying to help them, you know, figure out what's the best best method for them.
Right. And can you remind me of what is the current status of the rec center and the pools as far as?
Well, we're prepping for reopening, but we're waiting on the governor to to allow rec centers and fitness facilities to open up.
Okay, because I was I was sort of surprised. I read an article today and that there are some like small indoor water park type places in Michigan that are not going to be opening until November. And I don't, it was very unclear as to, they were basing that on CDC guidance. And so wasn't, I wasn't sure whether there was other information coming down the pike, or if it was just because they're more of a of a mass public place versus a membership based place?
I I'm not, I I'm not in those circles because we're not considered like an indoor water park or anything. You know, we don't have that same clientele. I know that regions six and eight were reopened with June eighth, I believe, up north. And they've for gyms and fitness facilities and rec centers and things like that. So they were opened up. We're, I'm expecting this week, maybe there would be some guidance from the governor on a date certain where we could reopen facilities down here. But I I'm not aware of the the water park, what they're doing.
So my last question is, will you put any measures in place to where the pool is just open to members, like where you can no longer get a daily pass?
No, that's that's a one of the options that we've been considering upon reopening. I think that's something I I don't know. It depends on the date that they allow us to do this. You know, if we start to get a lot of people that are are not are kind of bailing on the memberships and we have people that want to join, we'll definitely take new members at that point. We we want to know who is in our building. You know, I I don't think we're going to get overrun. And I think there's, we have things spread out enough where we can definitely social distance people. The the interior of the building looks completely different than it did pre-COVID. We have absolutely nothing in the lobby. You know, lounge furniture, bookcases, magazine racks, anything like that. So we're able to really space things around. And, you know, we're utilizing the gym for fitness. We're utilizing the classroom and really spacing things out. So we're, we have a lot of empty areas right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Dylan, Councilmember CEO, any questions for Director Scruggs?
No, I think that proposals is put forward or make a lot of sense, and I'm I'm more than willing to support them.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Scruggs, I had emailed you earlier, letting you know I was going to ask a question regarding maybe some citizen engagement. Have you have you talked to members or had a small pool of members that you could reach out to to discuss these these options?
I have, I've had numerous conversations with people that have called or have emailed kind of inquiring about, you know, what what are we doing? And and obviously, right now, and asking when we're going to reopen. In fact, I ran into a guy at the gas station at Costco today. He's like, hey, when are you opening? So, you know, I've had numerous conversations with lots of our members and community. I have not specifically talked with them about these options, but I think these are very reasonable options, ways to keep people engaged and also accommodating them if they absolutely are, they don't want to have their membership any longer. And, you know, and it may not be def- a COVID health related issue. I mean, some people are financially, they're they're really in a bind right now. And I I completely understand that as well.
I I agree, and I I just recognize that nationally and in our state, there have been a lot of loss. If there was a resident who felt that even that twenty-five dollar cancellation fee would be a burden on their family, can they write to you and ask for a special dispensation? You know, a special circumstance waiving of that fee?
Well, this, the policies are set by city council, so I I administer the the policies set by council. So I don't have that authority to waive that fee. They would have to come to council for that that waiver.
Right.
If you don't pay that fee, it's just, you know, it's just deducted from their, what they get back.
Certainly, certainly. And I I hope that if that is the case, I genuinely hope that residents can reach out and council could have a a an anonymous way of handling that or making decisions on a case by case basis. You know, my own family has lost permanent positions. And and people are hurting. I'm I'm helping support some people right now. So I just, I appreciate your thoughts behind this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Del Orco, questions or comments for Director Scruggs?
Thank you, Mayor Morrow. Carla, I want to thank you for putting this together and bringing these options forward. I think it's important that we be sensitive to the needs of others' health concerns. This is a extremely contagious virus with life threatening consequences to many. I think it's easy for us to forget that because it's kind of settled down now, and the cases are much lower in the hospitals, but we do not have any solid data to be able to predict whether or not there's going to be a second wave. And you have to understand people's reservations with respect to this issue. And extending this option to our residents is simply the right thing to do. So it's not the residents' fault that we had this pandemic, and I I'm very much in support of letting our residents know we care very deeply about them. We hope that they will return to our rec center, and this is a show of faith that they'll do the right thing as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Del Orco. Councilmember Kamara Sulak?
Yes, thank you. I I also concur that this is very accommodating to the rec center members to show a good faith in extending this option to membership, and I fully support. Thank you for all your work on this, Carla.
You're very welcome.
Director Scruggs, anything else you'd like to add this evening?
Um, actually, I do. And this is not related to this. So I don't know if you want to vote first, and then I could talk about something that just came up today?
Yeah, why don't we, we've got a motion first to acknowledge receipt and then to approve or not to approve. So let me get, let's vote on the two motions. And then if you want a few minutes to talk about another initiative or something that came up, that would be, that'd be perfectly appropriate. So we have a motion on the floor moved by CEO, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge receipt of the June eighth memo. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve? Councilmember Kamara Sulak, would you move to approve?
Motion to approve.
Very good. And Councilwoman Mitchell, would you second?
Yes, sir. Second that.
They're properly moved by Kamara Sulak, seconded by Mitchell to approve. Any discussion? Miss, I'll go back to Mr. Gearbaugh. Anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Not at this time.
No, Councilwoman Dylan?
Thank you. Um, I'm seeing a comment from the public, and it was actually a question that I had had, and I I actually neglected to ask, which was, Carla, have you gauged on your members as to their 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 level of engagement that they want to come back? And just so that you have a ballpark idea. I thought we talked about this during budgeting to kind of give you a better idea. Was there any formal survey done?
Yes, that was asked. We did not do any formal survey amongst our members. It was felt that we would probably get a wide variety of of responses. We did do some surveying with our kids camp program and rec on the go program regarding comfort levels and offering those types of of programming. So we did not, we did not do any type of formal surveying with our members.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, Councilman CEO, anything further you'd like to add?
Oh, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Mitchell? No, you're good?
I'm all set, Your Honor.
Beautiful. Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco?
Nothing further.
And Councilmember Kamara Sulak?
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Very good. They're properly moved by Kamara Sulak, seconded by Mitchell to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Carla, before we move on to the discussion portion of the agenda, there was something you'd like to add?
Yes, so this morning, M. Parks, our state association, sent an email to all of the Washtenaw County and Wayne County Parks and Recreation Departments. They have partnered with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to announce that they have some rapid response funding available for signage relating to COVID. So this is a very interesting grant proposal. There's no any type of match or anything. It's it's funding, like I said, just for these two counties, up to three thousand dollars for 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 different types of signage regarding social distancing distancing or guidelines or protocols in parks or at facilities and things like that. So I I wanted you to know the deadline for applications is June twenty-third. I did apply for funding for twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I got some quick signage costs and whatnot. And they're going to be awarding grant grants on June twenty-sixth. So this is a very quick turnaround. I thought this was a great opportunity for us to get some funding to do some additional signage around town at our our different facilities, parks and and city, city facilities as well. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I was very, it was very welcomed to to get this this information today. So hopefully, we'll we'll be successful in getting that.
Very good. Thank you for your initiative. Any comments or questions for Director Scruggs regarding the M. Parks Grant? Mr. Gearbaugh?
No, anything we can do to get some funds in is great.
Councilwoman Dylan?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman CEO? I think you walked away for a moment.
That's all right, Your Honor.
Yeah, any questions?
No.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Scruggs, thank you so much for pursuing this. I heartily endorse and appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco?
No questions.
Councilmember Kamara Sulak?
No questions.
Very good. Carla, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for the time.
Yep, we'll proceed to the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from city council members. Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh?
Nothing much from planning. We did have a review of all the open projects that are currently underway, and basically they're, you know, in different stages at this point. And then we had the special use permit. So moving forward, we're probably waiting for another project in the next month or so.
And you should note, Mr. Gearbaugh, the cell tower at DPW.
Yeah, well, we approved the the recommended site plan for the new cell tower, cell tower that will be Verizon service site, I believe.
You're correct. Thank you. Any other commission or committee reports, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Dylan?
Thank you. I've got two quick reports. One, I'm going to report out for the fireworks task force. Just because there's been quite a few comments lately on social media. There will not be fireworks this Fourth of July due to COVID. It just was not a viable option. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then I also wanted to do my weekly plug for the U.S. Census. Celine is doing really well with its response rate. We are at seventy-eight point seven percent. And I did want to make note because it's really important that of that percentage, seventy-two point six percent were actually done over the internet, which this is the first census ever that was an inner base, internet based census. And so to have such a high response rate via the internet is fantastic. And so if you have not done your census, please do so.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that update. Councilmember CEO, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
None at this time, Your Honor.
Very good. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Perhaps people have seen the historic building signs around town. We were supposed to celebrate Historic Preservation Month in May. We were all a little busy with other things in May, so those signs have gone up. I did see a very funny moment that could almost have been a sketch comedy. It was a a man, this house was sold. They're new to the neighborhood, and the kids were pointing at the sign, and the dad was like, I don't know. I believe that all new owners in the historic district get a brochure. But it's possible he did not. And, you know, he was pointing up and down the street, all of them having. So first of all, I I'm so grateful to our town that we had the foresight to preserve our history. And and secondly, it sounds like we can still work on that proactive part and reach out to new homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Del Orco, any board or commission reports?
I unfortunately have nothing to report until the next council meeting, so.
Very good. And Councilmember Kamara Sulak?
The Celine Youth Council meets tomorrow, so I don't have anything to report just yet. Thank you.
Good. We'll transition to reports and other announcements. Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh?
Yes, I thought I'd bring the council up to date on the Historical Society. Because of the concerns with COVID and the aspects of knowing that, well, three quarters of our volunteers are in the at risk group for potential exposure and so forth. The decision was made by the board to not reopen the museums for the rest of the year. The concern being we just can't manage to keep everything up to code and all that with mask and reporting and all that. We will let the grounds be open. There will be somebody though, so people can walk around the museums and so forth. There will not be sheep this year at the farm. It's kind of too late. And again, another, another concern with trying to manage all of that. We're hoping that what we can do in this fall, and maybe we could have harvest time, just depends on what's going to be at that point in time. We do encourage support still for our society. Unfortunately, we won't be able to have our July fourth event, nor will we have our harvest time, ah, not sorry, garage sale. Those are all going to be postponed for this period. I do want to let everyone know that unfortunately, because of the postponement of the July fourth event, we can't celebrate the hundred and seven, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I believe that's right. Yes, yes. The anniversary of the railroad coming into Celine. And so, because it would have been about eighteen seventy. And unfortunately, we'll be doing that maybe next year, and like everything else, have a bigger event if we can at that time. It's just makes prudent responsibility for us to protect our our volunteers and whatever else we can at this time.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Councilwoman Dylan, other reports or announcements?
You know, I just had a question, and it's to piggyback on Mr. Gearbaugh, Ms. Mayor, is that it's about the U.S. Twelve, the big garage sale. Is that still a go? I know that we've sort of said yes to to small garage sales. I just didn't know if that as an event was still going to happen.
I don't have any insight on that. We can report back at a at a subsequent council meeting. Mr. Gearbaugh, do you know anything about the U.S. Twelve garage sale?
I just that we will not be having it at the farm this year. That one's canceled.
We can look into that and report back at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Nothing else.
Yeah. Councilman CEO, any reports or announcements?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Gearbaugh, I just want to say thank you for your long time involvement with the Historical Society. That garage sale, is that your main fundraiser?
Um, yes, it is now. It's one of our main fundraisers. Then we sometimes get donations at the harvest time and so forth, but it generally is. We may reconsider having some kind of sale just for the salvage barn where we get donations and those type of things. But again, the difficulty of having the precautions and things in place for all that this year, that's why we might have some type of COVID fundraiser later on.
Right. Well, I, that's what I'm getting at. You know, I hope Jim Peters keeps us at the Historic District Commission pretty updated. And I am almost certain that the Historic District Commission would be happy to help promote, to help however we can. And we certainly do appreciate that. And we certainly do appreciate that all that's done at Renshler Farm and the Historic Depot. Thank you.
Councilmember Del Orco, any reports or announcements?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Kamara Sulak?
Nothing else at this time, thank you.
Very good. Then let's transition to an update on the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Wygowski?
Yeah, good evening. Let me start out with the water plant, if I might. The industrial drive water tower is, they're going to begin painting it this week. That process should take two to three weeks. So we have shifted the Henry Street Water Tower into the lead mode, and we have also installed a secondary alarm on that tower in case the first alarm fails. We have some redundancy, so we can get somebody in right away in case we have a problem with the system. So looking forward to getting that project completing completed. If you remember, we're going to do the exact same white with the Celine and print the city logo and then the Hornet on the other side also. So looking forward to getting that project started and finished. It's going to be weather dependent on the timeframe. So I'm hoping we have some kind of cool sunny weather. The wastewater treatment plant, both Nova filters continue to run. The first one started March 29th. The second one was started May 29th. They're both operating well. Out of the 18 RBCs, we currently have 15 running. We're waiting for two of the electrical units to be rebuilt. And we have the one with the new gear drive is being balanced still. We're going to try to put that back online probably tomorrow. Probably the biggest biggest issue is the bio scrubber. As you know, the fan failed on that unit, and a technician came out on May 20th or 21st, I don't recall exactly, and told us to shut down the unit. ECS, which is the company that put the whole system together, they immediately ordered a new fan that arrived on June 6th. And Industrial Air came up on site on June 9th and installed the unit. It was really difficult to install that because they have the soundproofing around it, and it was really tight quarters. But they got that in, and and when they started it up to balance it, due to it being out of alignment with the fan, the motor developed a problem, and the bearings were shot. So ECS again jumped on, jumped right to it. And they have found a local motor company that's going to bake the motor and rebuild it. And I removed it this morning. We loaded it on the truck. Should take about 72 hours, and I'm hoping to have that installed by the end of the week. But we have to coordinate that with the Industrial Air who's out of Illinois to come up here. But ECS has been working very hard to get this going promptly. I know it seems like a long time, but these parts are not off-the-shelf type parts. So they've been working very diligently, and I hope to have the system up and running by by this time next week. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Very good. Mayor Potem Gearbaugh?
Steve, you know, these are supposed to be all brand-new parts and items that are installed. What is the, or your opinion, is it bad installation? The products aren't up to scale? I mean, I hate to move forward because, you know, this is one of those things again where how much can we continue to expect out of the product in which we paid a significant amount of money for it?
Yeah, I think this is totally different than the Nova example that that we have. So for one thing, it's under warranty, and you know, all this repair is being covered. I know Nova was covered also, but ECS has really jumped on it. I think with the one bearing that went out on on the fan, that has also caused this motor problem. It's kind of a unique problem. All the ductwork and every every other part, the most substantial part of the project is is in very good shape. I don't anticipate this happening again. I think it's kind of a fluke item, but I could understand your hesitancy with our past experience. In the future, for that motor, for example, if we were to order a new motor at $3,800, so it's not a substantial thing. But the we're expecting a lot longer where I think with that one bearing going out did kind of cause a cascade with the with the motor. So I I think we're going to be up and running very, very soon, and it should last a long time.
Yeah, I'm just glad that things are under warranty, and hopefully this will resolve from that. In regards to, and you haven't mentioned it yet, the gas digester and then working on that one that was in your report. Do we anticipate that to be fairly quick fix once they come out?
I I believe that'll be a day or two, and they should be out next next week, I'm hoping. I I don't have a firm date on that yet, but it should be a day or two to go through our system and clean things up and adjust things. And I'm going to have All Tech Mechanical there to shadow them so they can do some some work on that in the future. And just going back to the bio scrubber unit and kind of going comparing to Nova, there are many of these units installed, so it's not like a prototype they they installed with us. I'm I'm expecting a pretty good reliability with that that in the the fan and blower in the future.
Okay. For that, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Potem Gearbaugh. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I think Mr. Gearbaugh kind of touched on some of my questions, so I'll move on from there. Steve, I guess I'll just start with, you know, we've been getting a lot of complaints about odor again. Is it coming from the digester? Is it coming from the RBC that's not turned? Is it coming from, you know, the flame? Is it, I mean, is there any way to pinpoint anywhere that this odor is coming from?
Yeah, it's it's pretty obvious in this case. So we have four possible sources, right? We have the RBC units that are being exhausted through a carbon unit, through the carbon scrubber, which is operating correctly. We have the flame burner for for the digester gas, which is working pretty well, but not perfectly. That's what we're going to have tuned up. We also have that that citrus smell that we kind of mask around the digester. And then the 800-pound gorilla is that bio scrubber, which draws foul air from all the processes, including the raw sewage. And that's not running. So all those, all those odors that should be going through the bio scrubber from the primary tanks and the influent area are not getting vented through the bio scrubber. So they're just kind of sitting there right now. So I'm 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 very, very confident that once we get this motor installed and get the bio scrubber up and running, we'll be back to having very little to to know odors.
Okay. So what, can I just touch back on the the RBCs are not vented through the bio scrubber? Correct?
They do a similar unit, a fan and a blower that goes through activated carbon. And those sulfur compounds are absorbed to the carbon unit. It's a different, different technology.
Okay. And has the, and I'm sorry, I don't know the technical name, the handheld device, the smellator? Has that been utilized to to determine where the smell is and if it's detectable as to that meter?
Well, unfortunately, we know it's detectable because I can, I can smell it. The residents can smell it, and we know the bio scrubber is not not working. So once we get that going, we'll get that super sniffer out and make sure that we'll be able to bring some numbers on how it's.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'm just looking for more data. Like, we know it smells, but does it smell at this level? Or is it, I I just want to make sure we have something to compare it to when the bio scrubber comes back online.
It's a good point. I'll I'll get some, I'll get some data right now with how it's running, and then we'll compare that once we get that bio scrubber up and going. That's a very good point.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Seale, any questions for Mr. Wygowski?
Yes, Your Honor. So Steve, the bio scrubber, that's what's being impacted by the fan right now? Is that correct?
Correct. So all the foul air from our covered units are most, except for the RBCs, is drawn through that fan, and then it's blown up through the bottom of the bio scrubber, where it interacts with the microorganisms and then exits through the top. So right now, we don't have any way to draw that foul air off of our 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 buildings and treat it. It's just kind of emanating out into the areas if we didn't have any type of odor control unit over the influent building and the primary tanks.
And then the other question I have is about, you know, the occasional popping sound or baseball bat sound that some of the residents were complaining about. What, what? Is that the one that's going to be overseen by UIS?
And that that's going to be a company called L&amp;J out of Illinois is going to come up. And they, that's all they do is biogas burners, such like they have it. Most of them are at landfills where you see the methane burners.
Right.
It's going to make that sound when it ignites because it's called a detonator. And that's just like your spark on your gas grill. It's just a little more industrial. What what we're hoping they can do is optimize it so it's not going off off as often. And it's not very loud when you're near it, but evidently, due to the acoustics, it it carries in in some different directions.
Okay, so that's the process that's going to be overseen by UIS?
L&amp;J Technologies are the company that installed the the unit.
Okay. Then wasn't one of those going to be, wasn't UIS going to sit in and watch so that in the future they could also assist?
That's actually going to be All Tech Mechanical. A lot of our HVAC stuff, and the owner is very interested in learning the process, and he he volunteered to shadow L&amp;J when they're here.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Wygowski, I just have a couple of follow-up questions. I was also going to ask about the handheld odor instrument. And for some reason, I thought we were going to get regular reports on that. If if that's something that we could, you know, if council's amenable, I'd be interested in having that data. It certainly doesn't have to be multiple times a day, but but something to to keep us in the loop and some type of hard data to use for that issue. Can you describe the number of odor complaints that you had this past month, please?
I've had complaints from two citizens. And I've had, I've had multiple complaints from one citizen and another complaint from the neighbor.
Okay, so so it doesn't seem like people, what what is the procedure that you want people to follow if they have an issue?
Well, I'd like to know, but when the equipment is broken like it is, there's very little I can do if somebody, they're welcome to vent at me, which they do. But there's nothing I can do. What comes in is what comes in, and there's nothing I can do to to change that. So if the if the equipment's running, we, you know, if we get a complaint and the equipment should be running, we'll come in and check to make sure it is running. Or maybe we've had a a power blip and it didn't restart or what have you. But when we know have, we have broken equipment, just like before this was was built, when we get a complaint, there's, there's really no option to to change it. It's 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 just coming from the community. It's not something we're creating there.
Right. So do you think there's any value to recording the number of complaints? Like, I'm thinking during the odor abatement project, at one point, we were having people call a phone number. We were encouraging them to call a phone number. Where are we with that process? Are people instructed to continue to do that? Or?
So we have an odor control log. So when you come in, you fill out the the log if you're called in on overtime and such. I get complaints very regularly from a neighbor, you know, and I don't log that every time because it's a daily, it's it's a daily event. And like, if the equipment's down, like I said, there's nothing I can do. So the the point of having that is to try to identify certain conditions that may cause the odor. I know what's causing this odor, the equipment's not not running. And I guess you're probably aware of that I'm not. I I don't go on Facebook. I've never been on Facebook. I don't follow social media. So I'm I may be blissfully ignorant of of some some items.
Well, I'm, I mean, that's fair to say. It it sounds to me as though, you know, rather than than say people have the right to vent, like, that's very generous of you, and and I too know what that's like. I've worked in lots of service industry positions. I think it might feel, so so first of all, if there's an odor complaint, I hope it is recorded every time, regardless of who is making the complaint. Because we can't invalidate another person's experience. That's what they're experiencing, whether it happens once a year or every day for a year. I I think that's valid. That's one person's experience. Is there a procedure as far as, well, you know, you have your handheld device? Is there a regular checking of the perimeter? What kind of procedure do you follow when there's an odor complaint?
So the procedure is to make sure the equipment is running that we paid for and installed to remove the odors. So it's hard to quantify. One person, like you say, may smell or may not smell, what have you. The only thing we can make sure is that the equipment that we purchased and installed is operating properly. So if that's not operating properly, we don't have any other options on what to do. If it's not operating properly, then we try to make some adjustments to that.
Absolutely. And and you've been very diligent, you know, during the COVID crisis, there have been companies that are not sending people out. You've been very diligent, you know, in keeping us up to date. I guess I'm interested in in something like a procedure that we have some type of data point when people measure it, are are calling in to complain. And I'd like to know what to tell residents, you know, it. I I understand what you're saying, and and you want Santa to bring you a wastewater treatment plant. I I do too. But I I think it's important to have some type of procedure, some type of data recording for this. So I wonder if you would consider that at some point, or, you know, if you need council to discuss it, we can do that. I also was wondering, I want to check in, is it you, Mr. Wygowski, or is it Mr. Fordyce that was looking at the damn alarm?
I'm going to look into that. What what my hope is, I haven't talked to Mr. Fordyce yet, but when the Spicer Group is there, I'd like, I'd like to meet with them during part of their inspection and kind of bounce some ideas off of them and what other communities are doing as far as an alarm system. Also, what do these do with the type of gearing we have? If there's an automatic turner that we could use as opposed to trying to crank that by hand during an electrical storm or what have you. So I'm hoping during that that event that I'll be able to work with somebody who oversees a lot of these type structures and can kind of get like a best practice or a procedure to to work on that.
Yeah, I think if they know that you want that time and and can make their appointment appropriate to include that, I think that's a really valuable idea. I appreciate it. And I just wanted one more update. You had talked about a maintenance book a while back. How is that project coming along?
So that's called the CMMS system, and we did get a bid from Tetra Tech to do a small project. And I don't remember the exact price, but we've asked them to to go ahead with that. It was like $4,200, I think, to do the odor system and the Nova filters and the RBCs, the three problems we've had. And that way, we can get a a model on how they're entering it and have a couple of discussions with them. So they've offered to to do that at a very reasonable rate because they they entered a lot of the information into that for the SAW grant.
I see. So I I guess I'm confused. So at one point, you had said that you came aboard with the city, and we didn't have a lot of operating manuals. Yeah, we didn't have, and and you were anticipating having to go through and recreate recreate that from scratch. Is that what you're talking about?
No, there's two different things. So there's one thing that's called an operation and maintenance manual, an O and M manual, which is a comprehensive manual for the entire plant. And then there's also equipment manuals that you'll get every time you get a, say, a motor and a fan. You've got something for the motor, you've got something for the bearings, you've got something for, you know, you've got six different manuals for a piece of equipment.
Sure.
What Eagle has suggested is that we have a comprehensive O and M manual for the plant. Okay?
Right.
And that would be done, those are, those are normally done by engineers.
Oh, okay. So what was the project that you had discussed? I'm so sorry, I'm I'm misunderstanding. I seem to remember that there was a project you were talking about earlier in the year, and it had to do with with operations and instructions. And there was a, you know, you had an administrator help with it. That's what I was referring to.
The CMMS system, the Computerized Maintenance Management System, which gives you tasks for each piece of equipment that you have. So it tells you how often to, if you have a blower, how often to grease that, how often to tighten the bolts, how often to clean something. And that, once, once that's entered into a system, it will give you daily tasks, weekly tasks, monthly, quarterly, semi-annually. Yeah, so it's like a tickler system, so you can keep track of how often you're working on something. And instead of working so much from a reactive system when things break, you have a proactive system to keep up on your maintenance. And instead of working so much from a reactive system when things break, you have a proactive system to keep up on your maintenance.
We love that word, Mr. Wiegowski.
Yeah, so so that's what Tetra Tech's going to help us populate a little bit of that, and then we'll copy off of that with the rest of our equipment.
I see. Okay, so so now I understand. So before you were thinking it was a project that you could do and maybe have some help from an Ministry of Assistance, but now it's a it's a Tetra Tech task, is that right?
Just for a small portion to do a model and then we can piggyback. And that's something I was gonna go to Ypsilanti and work with them on, but then the COVID crisis hit and I'm not, wasn't able to meet with somebody in person. Very helpful with the computer programs to actually sit down with somebody and go through things as opposed to talking on the phone and not not being able to share a screen and what have you.
I remember you saying that, how important it was to have some face to face interaction. Then I guess my last question for tonight is, what do you think the timeline for that project to be finished might be?
The C M M S system, the 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 maintenance management system? Yeah, I'm I'm thinking, um, to be realistic, barring anything else coming up, I'd say six months for the entire thing to be.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Arco, any questions for our waste water treatment superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, do you recall when the the bioscrubber went in as part of our baby project?
I believe it started up in August. The final acceptance was in August, I believe. Brian Ruble has those dates, uh, because they were administering the contract.
So it was as a little over a year ago, right?
Well, it it hasn't been a year since we've accepted it. It started earlier, but they were populating the bugs. So we didn't get final acceptance until E C S came up and did the performance evaluation, and that occurred sometime in August.
While I'm relieved to hear that a lot of this is going to be covered under warranty, when I start to look at major components that were included as part of the odor abatement project, i.e. Nova filters, flood pump, the methane burner, now the bioscrubber, we're having systematic failures on a number of pieces of equipment that have recently been installed. And I'm I'm just wondering if you yourself are starting to question what the problems are. Is it is it because they're manufactured with less than quality materials? Is it because they weren't installed properly? Is it because with with Tetra Tech, we're trying to save money and go with less than are are the cheapest bid on on contractors and and materials that were not getting quality?
Well, I I think they're, I know from your perspective, it 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 seems, you know, yeah, it seems like a pattern, but to me, they seem like different issues. For example, I I think the Nova filters, you know, they were installed in two thousand sixteen evidently, and I think that was the largest filter they had built. Obviously, they didn't beef it up the way it should have been, the way it seems to be now. You know, the flood pump that was installed and there was no indication that it needed to be rotated. It was installed and said it should have been worked. The first time that we tried to run it, it wouldn't run. Now we're bumping it all the time to make sure it's it's running while it's sitting there, which we didn't have to do with our other pump, and it wasn't told that we had to do that either. The the latest thing we found with that is that we'll only pump five million gallons a day, so we're still in trouble with the big storms that we've been having. So that's why we're gonna have to have a auxiliary pump. So that's not, according to Tetra Tech, that was the largest pump they could fit into that space. So that's kind of a hydraulic problem. Uh, so we're looking at tightening up our system to not have so much stormwater come in. D P W is located a couple of major areas on the west line that they've they've kind of solved. So we'll see with the next storm whether it's as bad as it has been these these previous couple. The odor control system, I I really think this one is just kind of a fluky thing with the bearing going down. It's pretty standard industrial equipment, having a blower or a motor like that. And it 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 just went bad early due to one bearing going down. It caused the fan to fail and the motor to fail. Motor failure wasn't evident until we started it up, added a line properly, and then it it happened. E C S has been great. And you know, three weeks, I know it seems like a long time when, you know, you're a resident. But they've really moved to get this done like very fast, and I'm pleased with that. The other system, I I'm not sure when that flame gas burner went in, if that was two thousand sixteen or 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 when that was, that was done prior to the odor project.
All right. Well, I guess my, I have more comment than than question, but I think these are things we should be contemplating and discussing with Tetra Tech as we think about bonding several million dollars to build a risk to make our waste water treatment plant sustainable, productive and safe. I I would hesitate to not question these things because I don't want to create a situation where we're spending millions and millions of dollars to 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 not to have similar type problems a year, three years after they've been put together. And I I really think this deserves some careful, rigorous scrutiny.
You know, and I think moving forward, whichever path you choose with the expansion, from an operation perspective, simpler is almost always better. You know, engineers like the engineer's thing. They love things being really cool and fitting together and, uh, you know, being kind of elegant. But from an operational standpoint, the more simple something is, the easier it is to maintain and understand. And, um, you know, it's it's a constant battle between designers and operators to get that proper, proper fit. You know, um, you want something that everybody's able to understand how it works and able to make adjustments, not just somebody who has a, you know, a college degree in engineering. So it's, um, you know, it takes a lot of communication in the in the design process. I think it's rarely a good thing to be the guinea pig and try a new technology. It's always good to see something that's kind of an industry standard and that other people have a lot of experience with. So we'll try to keep an eye on that moving forward.
That makes a lot of sense, and I could not agree more. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Camaro Sulek, any questions for our waste water treatment superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I'll I'll try to keep it quick. There have been a lot of good questions. And Ms. Riegowski, I don't want to keep you on the spot any longer than than necessary. And and Jim, Mr. Del Arco just asked some very poignant questions. And it it's very appropriate for us to have this, have these discussions for the maintenance, the operational concerns that we've experienced and in making a good decision in 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 being the confidence level in not only Tetra Tech, but the the future of the wastewater treatment plant. I think we're on the right track. I I I really think this critical thinking is is necessary so we can avoid all of these issues that we've been dealing with, or as many as possible. I know by nature, you know, it's, you know, nothing works, nothing works perfectly. And I I know you've been working, you know, ve- very hard. And, uh, you know, as a as a councilperson, it's difficult to answer these questions. And and I find myself thinking, as you said earlier, there's more broken parts. You know, we're waiting on re- on repairs, on contractors. And it's very difficult to answer to citizens, especially those that are impacted on a daily basis. And in my, you know, my my heart goes out to them on what they're having to endure. So, um, thank you for keep work, you know, working on it. And I I I I'd also like to see if there's a baseline measurement for the for the odor, just to start accumulating that data as well, so we have an idea and we can track that. You know, in the future and when we have our, you know, our our new plant that that we have, we have that information. Um, and I'll I'll leave it with that. Thank you very much.
Sure. And I'd just like to add, when when that bioscrubber was running, it was it was running very well. We had very few comments. And, you know, it, I think it's a testament to how well it was running that when it stopped running, we started getting the complaints immediately. So so it is effective, and we'll get that up and running as as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that that does show some promise. Thank you for for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Wiegowski. Appreciate your time this evening. Uh, moving along, and we'll keep this moving at a pretty brisk pace here. Mr. Campbell, do you have an update on the organizational review?
I do not.
Um, well, if there's no questions for the city manager, then we'll transition to water meter charges for residential irrigation system Huntington Woods. This is the issue that was addressed by two members of the public during the initial public comment period, I believe. And the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a a memo provided by both staff and legal counsel. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, does staff care to make any comment at this time before we open up for questions and see if there's consensus on this to maintain the status quo? Or to to accommodate the the interests of those who have have petitioned counsel?
I I will do my best to to start off. I don't know if Roger would like to to jump on or not. But so is my understanding that Mr. Weiss had had requested information to put in a what we call a sprinkler meter and, excuse me, the information, unfortunately, the the information on the website, the form, the application was not correct, was an old form. The city council adopted it in the fee, a fee book change in August, I believe it was August sixth, maybe. But anyway, early August of two thousand eighteen. The next day after the approval, the changes were made, the the changes to the hard copy, if you will, application that you can pick up in person at the at the community development department. Those those were changed and updated, but unfortunately, we did not change them, did not update the ones on the website. Um, as I looked into the matter, my understanding is, oh, also, it's also in B S and A as well for our the building services. So it was my understanding that that during this time, the all the all the meters that have been purchased and the secondary sprinkler meters have been purchased, installed have all paid the the increase, the new price of four seventy five since, uh, ever since it was approved in August of two thousand eighteen by city council. Roger, I don't know if you have anything that you'd like to add to that, those comments?
Would only add that in conducting a legal review of the situation, it's our opinion that the city is not legally obligated to charge the lower fee, given the facts and circumstances here. But it's certainly within the discretion of the council to decide what to do as a matter of policy, if you believe that that's the right thing to do.
Very good. Thank you, Roger. So I'll be entertaining questions, but also if you could provide your opinion on the matter, whether you would oblige the residents who've contacted us or whether you want to maintain, as I said earlier, the status quo and and charge the fee that was approved back in twenty eighteen. I'll begin with Mayor Protem Gierba.
Status quo.
Uh, Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Um, I just have a quick question. Has this error been corrected?
Yes, I've had a chance to update our main twenty seven forms. And by main twenty seven, if you come to the basement and the community development department, we have a wall of forms. Those have all been updated and add to the website. I still got a few more I have to go over, but this is one of the ones that has been updated.
Okay, and when was that updated?
The past two weeks. I think I think I got everything up on the website Thursday or Friday.
Okay. Um, so I I guess I I would feel as though that we should honor whatever rate was on those documents. That was what was forward facing. If it was, you know, on the website, that that's the error of the city not to update that. I don't think that that these residents should be penalized for the lack of attention to detail. If if we're if we're if we're offering that form in that format, we have to go by what's on it, in my opinion.
That was clear enough. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember C O?
I'm kind of torn on this issue. I I believe that city has obligations certainly to publish the current rates as they apply. And yet we do publish the rates in the fee book and so on, so there are other places for them to get the information. I guess that I would lean toward honoring the amount of us on the applications that people fill them.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Um, thank you, Your Honor. First, can I, I just need to clarify. I couldn't hear the last part of what Mr. C O said. So did he want to charge the higher fee or the one that was on the form? And then, um, when Mr. Girah said status quo, I guess I'm a little unsure what that means.
I can elaborate, but Mr. Girba, it's your opinion, so I'll let you, I'll let you explain it.
Based on the fact that everyone else has paid the same rate and now to give a bargain for it, why are we not going back to square one to refund all of those individuals that have received it? It doesn't make sense. Um, we have a legal opinion that supports the fact that we had it printed on our fee books. Council approved the brand new fees and everything, and that at this point, I don't see it being a benefit to to use the city, but I don't see it being a a justifiable approach for those that have already paid the full fee.
I see. Okay, I appreciate you clarifying. I could not tell your position from from that, so I really appreciate you clarifying. Mr. Green, is there anything on the form, the previous form, that said this price is subject to change?
On the form from two thousand thirteen, I don't believe so.
Okay, because to me, that makes all the difference. I guess I'd be interested on what foundation the legal opinion is based because if you're advertising one price at the store and it comes up at a lower price at the register, you have, you get to have the lower price. I don't think it's a a customer friendly policy. I I would respectfully disagree with with Mr. Girba. I respect that he's thinking about the others that have paid this fee. Mr. Green, do you have a system? Is is there a way to just have the, you know, price on demand and then a link to a single sheet? That's so then rather than update twenty different sheets, you're just updating one sheet?
Um, well, the way we do it, well, the 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 way I've done it now, it's, when we did this most recent fee book update, my department had a lot of fee changes and I immediately updated those forms. It was everything before that I had to go back through and double check.
Right, so I appreciate you're explaining what you did. Do you understand what I'm asking you?
Yeah, I I, the the way I have it laid out right now is I include the fee book as the first link on our department page. But as a, having a query that automatically updates every time, I don't know how well that would work with our current technology we have in the city, but something we could look at.
So are these, is this a fillable form?
It it will be hopefully in a couple of weeks. They're all PDFs, so they are technically fillable if you know how to do it. Uh, I just gotta get Adobe Pro on my computer. I'm gonna make them all fillable.
So you're waiting for some software, is that right?
I I haven't requested it from Chris yet. I just want to get all the forms on the website last week. But that's that's my next step for it is to make them all. The easy, easy way, fillable.
And how much time did it take for you to change all of the forms that you needed to?
Oh, it is pending form. Uh, two of them I had to completely retype because I couldn't find digital, like good digital copies. Other than that, it only takes me ten minutes a form, maybe.
Okay, so, um, would you mind checking with Mr. with Chris Shonk? And just seeing, I I think you can have a link in the form that just takes you right to the fee book. I I think that's a shortcut that would save time. There's less danger of blue, it's a, it's a process related issue, correct? Have you done any type of that work, like, you know, continuous improvement?
Yeah, yeah, the the only, my only concern with doing it that way is broken links. So anytime if if the fee book gets changed on the website ever, or I have to update the form ever, we have to go through all the forms again and make sure the link is updated correctly. So no, no matter what, it seems like I would have to go through each form every single time. So.
Well, I I think rather than a different link for every form, it could be a link to Well, I, I think rather than a different link for every form, it could be a link to the PDF.
Page.
Right, I can, I can talk with you aside. I think there's a very efficient way to handle this that's gonna save you time and increase efficiency. So I completely support giving the residents their original price quoted. I think it's important if the city says we're gonna do something and this is the price, I think it's very important to stick to that. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco, your opinion on the matter?
Thank you, Mayor Marl. I, I sympathize with the plight of the end user in this circumstance. The reality is we had one price advertised in one format, online access, and one price advertised in another format through the paper application. And the onus should not be on this resident to go through and dig through multiple locations to identify appropriate information and that needs to be consistent. The mistake is on behalf of the city. It is not on behalf of the end user and therefore I support honoring what they told them that they needed to pay in the first place.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamara Shulak?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also feel that the, the current rates were not appropriately displayed for access for the, for the residents. I, I understand the, you know, the legal stance, but I also feel that this is the price that was, that was shown. We should, we should honor it. And I like Ms. Mitchell's problem solving approach to try to rectify this for the, for the future. But I, I think it's a very reasonable expectation for residents to have the information available. They go through it. It sounds like they were not neglectful and that this is a very reasonable request. So I support honoring the, the rate. I think it was the $3.25 that was, that was shown. And based, you know, based on our discussion, you know, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers. I, I think we're fixing, we're fixing the problem because, because there was a problem. So I, I, I support honoring the, the lower price. Thank you.
Well, let me try to exercise some brevity here. You know, as I communicated to Mr. Weiss when he first reached out to my, my office, I thought his request was reasonable and I support the majority on this. The mistake was made by, by the city and we should own that. And so I'm inclined to, to charge the residents the fee that was discovered on the website when they, when they first inquired about this matter last summer. The good news is, of course, and I think I've mentioned this at, at our, our most, at the last three city council meetings, is that I'll be putting forward a initiative at our, our first meeting in July, July the 6th, to form a risk mitigation working committee. And so I think that these types of issues, we can put into place the safeguards and policies to prevent these types of mishaps in the future. So that, that's the good news. But as it relates to the folks in Huntington Woods, it's clear that the majority has a perspective on this and hopefully staff is clear on what the direction is.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, so what about the folks that have already paid the full amount since 2018?
Well, do, do we have, so obviously we maintain a database. We have those names, correct?
Well, absolutely. We can, and refund.
But do we have any idea how many are in that, how many are in that database?
It, it's, it's roughly 12 to 15. It's gonna take a while to go back through because we have to go line by line because there's not an easy searchable way. So we just got all the plumbing permits for the past couple of years, but our, our best guess is 12 to 15.
Okay. Maybe you and I can chat about this later this week, but let's try to pull that data and report back to city council. Okay?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Included within your packet was a request from Paul Gergosian, the proprietor of Brecken Grill. He reached out to me after, I think, it wasn't our last meeting. I think it was the meeting that preceded that where I had to unfortunately exit early and Mr. Gearbaugh graciously chaired the rest of the meeting. And he has some concerns about the Leather Bucket Alley lease agreement. He would like to see that lease agreement extended. He and I had a very good conversation. When we spoke, I said that I don't have the authority to do that, but I can add it as a discussion item for council to, to reconsider. We weren't able to get it on the, our, our last meeting's agenda, but we were able to get it on this evening. So you have received his communication. Just curious, I'm gonna do kind of a, a, a rough poll here to see if folks are inclined to, to make a change or whether you want to, you know, stand by the initial vote that was cast about a month ago, reference this one year lease agreement. Mr. Gearbaugh, any thoughts or opinions on this?
The only concern I had with the longer agreement is that it should have the option. It should a restaurant or something move into the old Benito's space that they would have the ability to potentially use that space. But other than that, no, because three years is fine as long as no one else is concerned about it and it does benefit that business because he is located right there.
So you're good with this, you're good with the contract as it, as it's currently worded?
Yeah.
Perfect, that's all I needed to know. Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Just to clarify, was there a document in our packet relative to this?
There should have been. There should have been a letter from Mr., an email from Mr. Gergosian.
No, I, I don't have a hard copy included in my packet. So I guess I just wanted to clarify because I'm not sure what he, I, I know generally what he's asking, but I don't have that document in front of me to review. I have the previous materials that we discussed at a prior council meeting.
And just a point of information, I don't have it either.
I don't either.
My apologies. I will forward it to city council right now.
Thank you. I don't have it either. I was just double checking.
You should receive it momentarily. Essentially what he's asking is for the, and he obviously wants a multi-year agreement. I believe what he stipulates in his message to me was he's looking for three years. And so again, I told him I don't have the authority to grant that, but I would add it as a discussion item for council to reconsider. So what I'm looking for is whether you're inclined to give him additional years or whether you want to maintain that the contract as was approved about a month back.
Okay. And so his reasoning for the multi-year, I believe, based on the old material that I did review, was that he wanted to make improvements in that space. Is he looking to make permanent improvements or is he just investing in furniture that he's gonna use for his business?
I would assume it's the latter, but we can seek clarification on that.
Because I mean, that, that's a huge difference whether he's improving a space, a public space that's going to, you know, continue on it. But if he's buying furniture that's going to benefit his business, which he can remove, I don't see a benefit to that. So I did want to say though, I was not in support of this, this agreement to begin with. I've always thought that, that the alley space should be a public space. So I will not be supporting the increase of, of the contract.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
Yes, I think Mr. Gergosian over the past few years has proven himself to be very civic minded. He's done a great deal for the community in terms of the room ball and the other kinds of things he's done. He's also helped the Slane Lindenberg group at the Oktoberfest immeasurably with the use of his commercial kitchen. I see no great clamor out there for the same spaces he's requesting and I would support his request for a three-year extension.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I did not really thoroughly read the email you sent. I, I just scanned it. So you said, you said Paul had contacted you with some reasons for wanting three years. Did he elaborate on those?
Well, it was what Councilwoman Dillon and I just discussed, which is he wants to make improvements to the alley. But I think her point is well taken, which is we, his request warrants a follow-up to see exactly specifically what kind of improvements those are. Does it mean he's purchasing furniture which would, which would exclusively benefit his enterprise or he's looking to make more significant improvements that which may improve the usability and aesthetics of the alley?
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Here's the thing, I love Paul. I love his restaurant. I've had lots of parties there and, and special events. I think I am hesitant to grant a longer time at this point because we are so much in flux. I believe the news is that Smokehouse 52 is reopening. I forgot to ask Mr. Green about that, if he's, if he's reached out to those owners to confirm that.
They made a public announcement on Facebook, so we can confirm that.
Oh, great, okay. And then I get, you know, because the building next door is empty, I'm just hesitant. So if there's a way, so yes, I'd be interested in what kind of improvements he's looking at. If it, if it's as you describe, I, I think that's fair to, you know, say, well, it's a year. It's your personal investment. And if the one thing I'd be willing to consider is some type of clause that talks about something being revisited. I really don't think it's fair for only one restaurant on a block to have access to public space. And I say that having enjoyed many a cocktail in Leather Bucket Alley. So I, I support Brecken Grill. I love it. And as it stands now, I can't support longer than a year.
Yeah, fair enough. Councilmember Del Orco?
Yeah, this was talked about at a meeting last month. And I think the major concern for most of us was that we have a vacant property that we would like to attract leaseholder to. And if there, if we commit to a three-year commitment through one proprietor, it may limit our ability to do so. I, I'm amenable to moving forward with my original vote. I stand by my original vote in that we can extend this agreement for one year, but I'm not willing to commit to anything beyond that.
Very good. And Councilmember Kamara Shulak?
Thank you. I, I share the concern about the, the Benito's space and being able to potentially use that and to attract a tenant there. So that's, that's a big factor and also wanting to clarify what the improvements are that, that, that he's, that he's alluded to. And I, I acknowledge the contributions that he's given, you know, that he's provided and shared to the community as, as many of our local businesses have. It's, it's, that's invaluable. But given this information, I also will stand with the previous decision for, for a year. I, I feel it's in the best interest for the adjacent property owner, the Benito's space. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Royal, can you email Mr. Gergosian tomorrow and indicate that council is interested in knowing specifically what kind of improvements he's looking to make? But we should also acknowledge that it looks like the majority is, is in favor of maintaining the one-year lease.
Certainly.
Very good. Thank you. Moving right along, street and utility projects. Mr. Fordyce, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, sir. So while we opened up very good bids for the woodland project, we had compiled other projects into one, what we call the streets and utilities projects. A number of streets in that with water main and sewer work as well as pavement. We only received one bid for that. Our, our advertisement got a lot of attention. We had over 90 plan holders for that project, but we only received one bid. And it was, the aggregate altogether was 43% higher than our estimates. We broke that down, street by street. And you can see that on page 184 of the packet. There's a table on that page that shows our street projects broken out and into individual projects. And some of them are significantly overestimated and some are in the 20% range overestimate. Also in the packet is, is a bunch of information on other bids, other communities, MDOT, that have come back well overestimates. It's, it's last year and, and into this year, there's been, there's been this problem with some projects coming in significantly over budget. We've participated in that with the textile woodland roundabout. When the bids came in on that one, they were 23, 24% over. And, you know, the county opted to go ahead with that project. And then the city had to increase our share of that project as well. So why I am bringing this as a, as a discussion item is the contractor is amenable to kind of repackaging it and just taking those four streets that are in the 19 to 24% over estimate.
Mr. Fordyce, enumerate those, those streets for the public's benefit.
Those would be Mills, Nichols, Watson, and Whittier. And I need, so I need some direction from council, whether council is interested in, in entertaining that option or the alternative would be to reject this one bid and then repackage these and rebid them in the fall for 2021 construction.
Well, here, here's my opinion and it's pretty emphatic. And I spoke to the city manager about this this week. Yes, if there's a way to repackage this, absolutely. However, if we're gonna have somebody working on Mills, help me understand, why would we not have them do Highland in conjunction with that?
Well, that was the original plan. The Highland and Mills were, were kind of in the, in the plans, in the design packaged as, as essentially one unit because the utilities on Highland connect into Mills at that end. The reason not to do it with this bid is that the, the Highland portion was 72% higher than, than the estimate.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. However, as you know, because throughout the course of my tenure as mayor, I've been in, in contact rather, actually constant contact with folks on, on Highland Drive. That street needs to get redone. I mean, there's no, there's no way around that. So, you know, I, I'm willing to incur the additional cost because of how abysmal Highland Drive, the condition of Highland Drive is abysmal and because we need to do utility work there. And if we're already doing work on Mills, it seems prudent to, to try and coordinate that. So I don't know how we get this done, but my, my own personal opinion is very much in favor of moving forward on Mills, Nichols, Watson, and Whittier, but I want to see about adding Highland.
I'm sure the contractor would be able to do that. There, I mean, if we're willing, if we're ready to, to spend that extra money, that's great. You know, we need to get streets done and, and utilities repaired. And there's no doubt that Highland is, pavement's in very poor condition and the, the water main and sanitary need, need replacement as well. We could, we can do Mills and, and stub out the utilities to Highland so that that road could then be done. It would still be later, but it would be done without impacting the work on Mills.
I just think, I'd like you to push back a little bit more and see what we, see if we can't add Highland to that and get that obviously at the most reasonable cost possible.
That's, that's a decision for council. You know, this, this was competitively bid, these are the bids. There is a little bit of negotiating because if we remove projects, you know, that there's some lump sum items in there that change a little bit, but we can, I would not expect any significant changes on the overall price.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh, your thoughts on this matter?
Jeff, if you're repackaging, why couldn't we repackage Highland and Mills as one project? And then the other three, whereas is that not an option at this point? And rebid?
So to rebid for construction this season is, is really not an option. What, one of the driving factors in why these, this bid is high is the amount of work that's out there. There were a number of projects that had been previously awarded that were put on hold during the pandemic and that those have been released now. There were a number of bid packages that people were planning to bid, but they kind of held on to. And then those came out in April. So to rebid any of this for construction this year is not, not realistic. Certainly not to expect any better pricing. What we can do is work with this contractor. to pull individual projects out of this. And that's, and that I was proposing Mills and Watson, Whittier, Nichols, just because they were the, the best prices within this. We can, we could do the whole project, but, um, we don't, I don't think we actually have enough money currently to do this whole project, uh, at this price. So the, the funding of it comes into play as well.
For me is, what you're saying is there's no reality of us getting roads done in this summer, correct? Or this season?
So I mean, woodland, kevling, and, and River Oaks going forward. We can do these this year with this bid. But we can't rebid and do them this year.
Okay. I know there is a concern about getting the streets fixed and everything, but we also know that the pandemic is causing a huge issue in one single year and that seventy-two percent overbid for me is not something I'm easily going to swallow. Um, so for me, it's the idea of making, making sense of how to do the projects. And if it means reconfiguring them and doing Mills and Highland at the same time. However, we need to do it, but whatever makes sense to get those roads, I don't necessarily like that idea of stubbing because then you're going to patch the road and all that. But you know better on that in terms of how that can be accomplished. I'm glad that we're at least getting some of our roads done this year and so we'll get some more done next year when I think it's more of eligible bidders are going to be out there, I hope. Um, so moving forward, I'm from the perspective of I, I, I believe Mr. Fordice's approach to somehow repackage and not necessarily for this year, for maybe next year is, is my support.
Councilwoman Dillon?
Could I just clarify that for a second there, uh, just to make sure I understand? Dean, are you saying reject these bids and rebid all of these projects?
Well, if we can't get this all done at one time this year, and I, I don't know whether we're going to get another, how much reduction are we going to get, if anything, by splitting out Highland and then going forward with, uh, four roads that you're talking about? How much is that going to be more than what we had originally estimated?
So the, the four roads that, that I was proposing are between nineteen and twenty-four percent over the estimates. All of them altogether are, are forty-three percent over the estimates. So Hillcrest, Lawson, and, and Highland came in substantially over estimates. And, and those, if we do, if we do the four this year in that twenty percent area, then Hillcrest, Lawson, and Highland would be rebid for construction in twenty-one.
Okay. That's fine with me. I find packaging up differently. I just don't know if, if Mills makes sense to do it while we're not going to do Highland. For me, no offense, Mr. Mayor, but seventy-two percent increase, not worth it. I, I would rather see us E O Y spending of the taxpayers' dollars. And I know it's going to be another year, but we didn't anticipate this craziness this year.
No, I, I, I agree with that, Mr. Gearbaugh. I just, if there's a way to push back and include Mills this year or include Highland along with Mills, I, I just, it's, it's not only the road that's in abysmal condition, it's also utilities that need replaced. If it can't happen, i- i- it can't happen. But, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Fordice. If there's a way to repackage, rebrand this to still get some quality infrastructure projects done, which is what our residents and business owners are expecting, I think we ought to do it. So your position is clear. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. And Mr. Fordice, I apologize. Um, the internet at City Hall all of a sudden is getting very spotty. And so I missed a large portion of your response to Mr. Gearbaugh. So if you've already answered, I'm very sorry. So will these projects be done, the four that you're saying, are they spring, are they like summer projects or what's the timeframe for them?
So originally in the contract, um, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols were scheduled to start in the spring. But if we repackage it, they would go this year along with Mills. So in the original concept of this contract, Highland, Mills, Hillcrest, and Lawson would be this construction season. And then, um, Watson, Whittier, Nichols would have been, uh, starting in the spring of twenty-two.
Okay. So the four that you're suggesting now, when would that road construction happen?
This, this construction season.
Which means between now and October?
Yes.
Okay. I guess what I want to know is where do we stand with the infrastructure? I mean, roads are roads are always going to need repair. I'm more concerned about what are we looking at water main breaks because we've got, you know, dilapidated, you know, infrastructure that's going to end up costing us more in the long run if we let it wait.
Well, so all of these have, uh, other than Mills, all of these have significant water main and sanitary sewer work, um, and some storm. Mills has a, a component of storm sewer work in it. So these are all projects intended to deal with that, that issue, that, um, these are ones that have older water mains with, uh, a break history and sanitary sewers with, uh, issues as well. So you, I mean, you can't, you can't replace all of those at once, you know, so this is a, this is a step-by-step process. And this is, you know, this is our, one of the steps in the updating of this, of the infrastructure, the buried infrastructure. So, you know, i- it's unlikely, i- i- I mean, it's, it's, there's no way to predict it, you know, how many water breaks, main breaks will there be on, on Highland? If we push this off to next construction season, uh, there's no way to predict it. Will they cost, you know, as much as this project costs? No, they won't. You know, we can, we can repair water mains, um, in-house and, and relatively inexpensively. It's a big hassle. It's certainly, uh, an inconvenience for the, the residents impacted by it. And it's a lot of work for our crew. But, um, cost-wise, it would, it'd be nearly impossible for it to equal the cost of this project.
Okay. Now, can you remind me the, the woodland project that we just discussed earlier this evening? Where did that bid come in in comparison?
Good to the estimate, it was, um, I didn't calculate the percentage on that, but it was quite a bit under. Um, we were in the eight eight thirty range. Um, and then we had some contingencies in the C I P. Um, and it came in at, what, whatever was it, sixty-five? So a hundred and fifty grand under.
Okay. Yeah. So that's significant dollars. So, um, I mean, option one is you sort of take, you know, you're under from that and you apply it to the over of this. You know,
Yeah, the over, the over of this is quite a bit more. I mean, the over of this is, is a million, a million four.
Right.
So.
But not for the, for the, for the four.
Not for the four, right. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think right now the, the, the project as a whole is off the table. I don't think the city can afford that. Um, I guess I'm, I'm looking more back to you and your professional opinion of what are the, the trends in construction? I mean, the fact that we got one bid that's so far under and then, then we get some that are so far over. I mean, is it prudent to just hold back our dollars? And wait and rebid it out next year in a different configuration? Um, you know, is inflation going to just absorb this nineteen to twenty-four percent? I mean, I guess, I, I, I don't know what the market is.
The market is, is weird. Um, and we've had a number of years of unusual circumstances in, in the in the, you know, underground utility, street construction industry. There was, uh, a, two seasons ago, it ended with a labor dispute that pushed a number of projects that were supposed to finish in the fall. They had to go into the spring. And then we had record-breaking rain that spring, which pushed things that were supposed to happen in the spring into the summer. And then we had a pandemic, you know, so there's been just this, this string of unusual events that have really hit road construction very hard and, and made the market quite volatile, um, and expensive. So, you know, if we don't have another oddball occurrence, then next year probably will settle down a little bit. So there's, there is a possibility that, um, you know, but if, if I could predict markets with any great certainty, I would be in a different line of work. Uh, so.
Send your Monday nights here with us.
You're all great people, but, uh, yeah. If I could be sitting on a yacht somewhere, that'd be nice. But, um, so it's, it's, you know, it, it is a tough balance between, you know, we got to get these things done and we don't want to overspend on them, obviously. Um, so that's, that's kind of the, the balance I was trying to strike with my proposal is, you know, take the, the lower parts of this bid, move forward with those and, and rebid the more expensive parts. And, you know, in the expectation that the market will settle down a little bit.
Right. And I appreciate that. So I guess I just want to revisit what Mr. Gearbaugh and the mayor had talked about, which is this, this point with Mills and this sort of teeing into a project that we wouldn't be doing. How do you feel about that? Like from an engineering standpoint?
I, I think it's fine. We've actually done that in the past. Um, we did that on the North Harris project where we designed utility connections out of the North Harris right-of-way into adjacent streets that were, um, scheduled for future years. Actually, um, this Watson, Whittier, Nichols collection has stubs coming out from North Harris waiting for them. So from a, from a roadway design, engineering point of view, um, you know, just laying out those stubs and putting them in place so that when Highland is done, we can connect right into them. This is fairly simple.
Okay. And then can you just remind me my last question so he can move on? What's the actual dollar amount that we're talking about with this nineteen to twenty-four percent? What is the overage in dollars?
I didn't bring my computer classes with me on this trip, so. So Nichols is, was estimated at six hundred and twenty-four thousand and came in at seven hundred and seventy-six. Watson is about a hundred and fourteen thousand over. Whittier is a, a less expensive project. That's only about sixty-five grand over. Mills is about a hundred grand over.
Okay. So I mean, these overages, I mean, is that enough to just sort of make up a whole other road project? Theoretically, not one that has a lot of infrastructure, but.
Yeah. Well, we don't, I mean, we don't have anything else ready to go right now. I mean, we don't have any, um, simple, just milling-filled projects available. You know, so every, every, just about everything we have that needs pavement also needs utility work at this point. So there's nothing to quickly turn to.
Right. And do we have to do those four? I mean, d- does it have to go as a block of those? Can you take the one, you know, I mean, obviously Mills and Watson appear to have the highest.
So we, we don't have to do any of them. We can reject the bids. But to renegotiate with the contractor, we need to put together a package that's appealing to them. So, y- you know, they're not, if we, they're not obligated to hold any of these because they bid a whole package. And if we don't award the whole package, they don't have to honor the bid. You know, so I, I did talk to them about just doing Mills. Um, and that was not enough work to interest them. There's other opportunities that they could pursue. So, um, they came back with the, the four-street package, which, you know, makes sense and gets a lot of work done. So we can reject the bid because we just, it's, you know, way overestimate and, um, and put things together for next construction season. Um, or we can negotiate with this bidder and, and try to come to some understanding.
Okay. I guess finally my wrap-up, because I can see the mayor looking at me, um, is going to be, I, I guess theoretically, I just feel like we need to reject it as a whole. It would be different if we got five bids and they were all twenty-five percent over, because I feel like, okay, that's more. We got one bid. And so I, I just, I'm not a hundred percent confident that moving forward with just this one is the right thing to do. And I think that, you know, I guess my, my, at the end of the day, my, my take is that we just rebid the whole thing out for a project later. And maybe in a different configuration. So I apologize, Mayor. I was very long-winded with my questions.
Thank you. Mr. Seal?
I like Mr. Fordice's approach of trying to go forward with the four streets that he figures that are reasonable right now and then, uh, for bid package and getting as much done as we possibly can this season.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Fordice. I have to say that about a year ago, you warned us that projects were coming in twenty to twenty-five percent over bid. So I just want to recognize that you predicted that and we're looking at some of those numbers.
I wish I had been wrong.
Me too. Um, so I guess my first question is, is this, can we legally call this a bidding process if we only have one bid?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, can you explain to me and also to residents? What is stubbing? What does that mean when we're talking roadwork?
So we'll just talk about the water main. Um, so, you know, the water main is, is a big pipe that's buried underground and brings water out to the, you know, throughout the city. They generally run in the streets. And so there's a water main in Mills. And the water main on Highland connects to that. So part of the quote Highland water main is actually under the pavement of Mills Street. So when we, if we're going to do Mills, repave that and do the utility work there, we would put in that water main connection and run it into the Highland right-of-way. So that when we're ready to repave and do the work in Highland, that pipe is sitting there waiting for us. We don't have to cut into the nice new pavement on Mills.
Okay. That's a really clear explanation. Thank you. Um, do we have the different pacer rates of these streets? You know, rather than looking at just money, do we know is, do you have that handy?
Um, I don't have those numbers available. I mean, Highland is, uh, you know, about a one. You know, it's, it's pretty much completely failed. Uh, Watson, Whittier, Nichols are in better shape than Highland, but they're still, you know, in the poor range, you know, four or less. Mills is a major street. We try to, um, hold those to a little bit higher standard so that maybe in the four territory, but there's some significant patching there and stuff. So, you know, Mills is certainly not our, you know, Woodland and, and Maple would be our, our worst major streets at the moment. And we're going to fix Woodland and then we, Maple's on the dock for next year. So, you know, Mills is a very good major street candidate right now.
And I mean, Mills has been bad. I've been talking about Mills Street, I think for three budget rounds. So, um, speaking of budget, if we were to package just the four, what kind of, how do you make that work in your budget?
Well, I, I put this proposal to, um, Joanne McDonough and she reran the numbers to, you know, check the funding levels in the street fund and in the water and sewer funds. We do have sufficient funds to, uh, rework things and do those, that four-street package in this construction season. And then it looked like going forward, uh, it didn't impact things too terribly, you know, that we'd be able to continue in the next season with, uh, additional projects.
Right. I mean, I, I would love to do Highland as well, but that, that percentage of coming in so high, I think any resident would say reasonably, like, we can't possibly budget for that. And, and we need another whack at it. When you're looking at something like Highland or what was the other one that came in so high? Hillcrest?
Hillcrest and Lawson, yeah.
Yeah. So was it, was it the sewer or the water that? Yeah. So was it, was it the sewer or the water that was so high? Was it the roadwork? What, what was the contributing factor to the high increase?
It, um, there were a couple of unit prices in the utility sections that really kind of drove it. So both the water and the sewer seemed to be driving factors on those, on those streets. The pavement in general, I think, was pretty close to estimates and pretty close to what we're looking at on Woodland.
Okay. So it really is something with underground things right now?
Yeah. And a lot of the, my earlier commentary about projects and contractors being busy is more specific to underground contractors than paving contractors. There seems to be, at the moment anyway, more, more capacity in kind of straight up asphalt projects like Woodland, which is the vast majority of that work is, is just asphalt. But projects that involved underground work, those are the ones that seem to be particularly backed up right now.
Okay. All right. And then the other question I have is for Mr. Mayor, what, what happens when we have a chunk of money left over? Is this from the millage part of our funding? Do we refund it because we've not used it this year? Do we save it and you add it on to what our streets are doing next year? What is, what is your thought on that?
Generally, we would roll it over and apply it to future projects ensuing years.
And the amount, Mr. Fordice, what's the amount we would roll over?
Specifically from our street millage? I, I don't know that number. I see Mickey Joe.
That's reasonable.
Put her on the spot, but.
Right. No, no, that's reasonable. I, I'm just curious because I'm really on the fence about how do we, how do we handle this? I think we should do whatever we can do. I'm happy with packaging the four. I really can't stomach doing those, those others that are sixty percent, eighty percent, seventy percent over. That's where I am. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Fair enough. Councilmember Del Arco, your thoughts on the matter?
Mr. Fordice, I, I'm trying to wrap my mind around what accounts, what we can point to for the differential. We got four roads coming in at nineteen percent over budget. Another, the other portion of the project is a forty-three percent over budget, accounting for one point four million. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
The, the total of all the streets, yeah, is one point four over estimates.
Over. So, so is it the case that the, the ones coming in at forty-three percent are significantly more utility work, underground work than the ones coming in at nineteen percent over budget? And then the ones where we had previously for Woodland with under, there, there's also utility work there too. So I can't really understand why there's, there's no rhyme or reason to where these bids are coming in at.
So there actually, there actually is. Wood, Woodland has very, very little utility work. And the utility work it has is storm sewer, which is, it's much less expensive in general. The, and the vast bulk of that is, is aggregate and asphalt. So that's a, that's a pretty simple, straightforward project. The ones that have come in, re, you know, I don't know, twenty percent over reasonable, those are pavement, a lot of, um, water main, but not that much sanitary. The ones that are really high, Highland, Hillcrest and Lawson have pavement, water, you know, full water main replacement and full sanitary replacement. So those are all three are on the ones that are very high. So that's, that's the pattern that's come out in our bids that, you know, primarily asphalt projects are fairly reasonable, like Kevling, River Oaks and Woodland. Water main high, water main and sewer, very high.
Right. Okay. So it's your opinion then that the ones with significant utility work underground, whether it's full water main replacement necessary, those infrastructure projects are stable enough to where we're not going to be punished severely by putting that off for another year in the sense that we could have some major catastrophic event that would cause us more money down the road.
I wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us more money, I don't think, but it could cause, you know, significant inconvenience. You know, Hillcrest and Lawson had been in a, a future year in the CIP. And based on the last year and a half or so of experience there, I, you know, pushed to have that moved up so that we could fix them this year. So there are, I mean, there definitely are concerns with, with Highland, Hillcrest and Lawson in the, the quality of the, the buried infrastructure there. I very much would like to do them. But, but these prices are, they're high. So.
Were they cambered as part of the SAW grant study and were we given an analysis of how, what the infrastructure looks like?
Parts of the sanitary on Hillcrest and Lawson, we've got, one of the things that's interesting on Hillcrest and Lawson is that the, the sanitary and the storm sewer there run not, so they're in the streets, but then they run between houses and, and then back into Riston Park. And that's, that's one of the areas of concern. So those were videotaped and, you know, work was recommended there in the SAW grant.
Well, as much as I hate to put the projects off in light of that information, I, I just don't see it as, as something the city can afford to move forward when the overages come in that high. And unfortunately, we're in a situation where we have to roll the dice. We don't get those, the whole project done at once as was intended. And, and that, and that makes me to some extent sympathize with where Ms. Dillon is coming from and that we should just reject all these bids and then, and then roll out to try to do it again in the subsequent fiscal year. But I, I need to defer to your professional opinion on where we are with respect to the other pieces of the project. And is it worth twenty percent over budget to go ahead and move with those projects now as opposed to rebidding the whole thing?
Yeah. I mean, and that, that is tough because, you know, the ones that I, I feel are higher priority are the ones that are higher price, you know? So if I was just looking at the, these streets and say, okay, which ones we do next, I would say Highland, Hillcrest and Lawson. But those are the ones that came in very high. So, you know, we didn't really talk about it, but there's other information in your packet about, you know, multiple other projects that are coming in high. And so, you know, is this, maybe this is the new, these are the new prices, this twenty percent above estimates? And, you know, and that's, that's why I brought it today to discuss this is because, you know, we can get that work done. We can go ahead and get that work done. It's not, that package is not the, the most urgent of this group of streets, but it's doable. You know, we can, we can get that work done and move on to the next bidding cycle and, and get these other three done. So it is, it is, there's no, there's no perfect answer here. And I don't have a, a super strong suggestion either way. I, I, if you, if council collectively wanted to reject all the bids, I think that's perfectly reasonable. If you want to go ahead with these four projects, I think there's a strong argument for that. You know, going ahead with all of it, we, actually, we don't have enough money to go ahead with all of it right now. So.
Right. Right. Well, seeing how you yourself are torn, I guess if I have to make a decision tonight, I'm in favor of rejecting all the bids and then going ahead and prioritizing the work that needs to be done on order of priority with respect to how severe the infrastructure upgrades are, are needed. And put the emphasis on those projects moving forward and focus specifically on the ones that are in most need of repair.
Thank you, Mr. Kamara Sulek. You're last.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. I, I appreciate all the good questions and I'm also struggling with putting a rhyme and a reason and to have a good rationale for, do we proceed with certain, you know, certain projects and wait on others? Hedge, hedge our bets with, and, and do the lower overage projects? But I, I think the most prudent thing to do is to really, I need more information from Mr. Fordice and, and I think we need a little bit more time. Maybe we need to, to table it and to really get a better sense of which projects are most urgent and how that will best serve our, our citizens. And by the sounds of, of Highland, you know, if it's, you know, if it's failed, how much worse is it gonna get? That's, you know, that's pretty bad. I'd like to have a better idea on the, the, the shape, the condition rather, for Highland, Hillcrest, Lawson, you know, the three most expensive. It sounds like those, those may be more pressing needs. You know, it, it's tempting to go with the, with the lower overage ones. So I'm, I'm torn. I, I don't want to make a, a rat, not that it's a rash decision. I'd rather have a little bit more time and information.
Just so that we're clear, all we're trying to do tonight is, is, and it appears that there's a scant majority that's in favor of Mr. Fordice working with the bidder to see if he can package those, those four projects that he enumerated. Of course, if he is able to come to, to an equitable a, a agreement or terms on some work, that would subsequently have to come back for city council to, for debate and approval. So.
I think, I think that's worth seeing. That would look like, unless, you know, unless you're confident it wouldn't, Mr. Fordice.
Well, what I, what I'd like to say is that we, we really need to pick a path tonight. Cause if, if we're not going to award anything, we, we need to let this contractor go so that they can pursue other work. If we're, have a consensus on pursuing, you know, some subset of this, they are, they've expressed willingness to do that and, and to award that at the, the next council meeting. But if we're, yeah, if we're not collectively, you know, willing to, to take that route, then, then we really need to let them go and pursue other work.
Yeah. It, it appears there's a scant majority that are, are, are amenable to you working with them to see if there's a way to package those, those four projects.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, moving along, we still have a decent amount of ground to cover. I think these last issues are gonna generate some discussion. So please try to exercise some brevity, my friends. City engineer DPW vacancy. Mr. Campbell, do you want to provide a, a brief synopsis on this? And then I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Girba and Councilwoman Dillon, who served on the, the hiring committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we know, in February, Mr. Fordice announced that he would be leaving mid-July for new, uh, new travels to, to Oklahoma. So we started looking at the, posting the position, which I think we did within two weeks or maybe it was three weeks after he announced, trying to replace as the combined position of the city engineer DPW director, after we had made those adjustments last year as a result of the organizational review. While the organizational review did, they actually had separated out two different jobs. We were, again, with lack of resources, we combined those positions. However, so then we, we had a, our, our search team, excuse me, as Mayor Marle just alluded, and as really received a total of, I believe, six applications. We posted it and then we reposted it in a couple of other professional areas that we, that we hadn't, the, the original time. And at that point, we just generated one additional applicant. And so then the, the search team discussed the pros and cons of trying to separate it out into two positions. The engineer position is, and, and the DPW director position. And so the information I had in your packet that was included, sent out, talking about some alternatives and, and, and what the cost would be and where those costs, those dollars could come from. And so just real, very briefly, alternative one would be status quo. With no change, we'd continue to try and post the, the one combined position. Alternative two would be to separate it out into two separate positions, a, a city engineer and a DPW director. Then we had two alternatives within that second alternative. One would be to post for a DPW director position. And then also, one of two things for the engineer, we could keep Mr. Fordice on for six months while he would be obviously working remotely from Oklahoma as a city engineer, as a part-time employee. Or we could issue a request for qualifications in RFQ to see if, if, if we could have, if there's any engineering companies that would want to provide that service. And, and I did get a ballpark estimate from, from Tetra Tech. Tetrec was serving on, on the search committee. But just so we at least had a ballpark to think about, and, and I think I've mentioned this before, but roughly about a thousand dollars a day, plus or minus a little bit. And then just for some context, Mr. Fordice, at his current pay rate is about four hundred and fifty-five dollars a day. So as far as additional, the, the revenues, there'd also be a cost, probably going to be two to three months to hire that DPW director. So our deputy, presumably the DP, the deputy DP, DPW director would serve as an interim director for those two or three months. So there's a, a little bit of cost, about sixteen hundred bucks for increase there for that position. And then, uh, so total, total unbudgeted cost, a little over fifty thousand dollars. And of course, that's broken out between general fund, water and sewer. Possible budget savings would be approximately eleven thousand dollars of savings because the new DPW director would not be hired within the two or three months. So there'd be some savings to the budget there. And then currently, we currently have vacancies, the assistant city clerk position. We currently have a, a city clerk, Ms. Royal, and then an interim deputy clerk. And we're, that position is currently posted right now. So total budget savings would be seventy-nine thousand, seven fifty-five, which would cover the fifty thousand, ninety dollars unbudgeted cost.
Hey, very good. Now, Mr. Girba, your thoughts and opinions on this matter? What's your recommendation?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, this is Kristen. Just a point of information. I want to check with the lawyer. I believe that Mr. Fordice has the right, because we're discussing his employee situation, I think he has a right to ask for a closed session. And I just want to check with the lawyer on that for, and I want to, if, if he does, I want to offer him that courtesy.
Mr. Swatz?
Yeah, those, those are, the right to a closed session is for discussions regarding discipline and other punitive issues. So I don't think that that would apply here.
So if the, if it, if it says for the, for, under personnel matters, wouldn't this be a personnel matter?
Uh, it's, it's, it's not as broad as personnel matters. It's, it's to discuss disciplinary matters.
I see. Okay. All right. I appreciate that. I wanted to.
I'll just say from, from my point of view, if, I mean, if we're discussing how to provide continuity and keep projects going and engineering services and whatever the terms of my employment, I'm comfortable with open session. If we're gonna go into a performance review, then yeah, I would request a closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Mr. Girba, your opinions on this matter? I know you have a recommendation.
Yes. Working through this, I mean, we'd realized that as a result of the position, it was a unique situation. Jeff had the qualifications and when we completed it originally, he could fulfill both parts of it. The realization though is when you go out into the market right now, trying to find a candidate that has the certification for the type of engineering needs that we have and also fulfill the DPW role for the price that we're requesting. The likelihood of us finding a candidate at this point is not gonna happen. So we came forward, we discussed it, and even talking with the city of Ann Arbor, this is similar to how they did it, was by breaking out their DPW director and engineering services. And they have that either as a part-time position or they may engineer, hire a consultant. So looking at the aspect of this, we looked at both the concerns of both cost and then the issue of continuity and, you know, basically institutional knowledge. We know that this is only a six-month suggested appointment because then we hope to by that time have a new city manager in place. because then we hope to, by that time, have a new city manager in place and will help lead us through the idea of selecting a, you know, alternative, either to continue with a consulting contract or do you have an employee in that role? And determining based on that, we'd also know more about what's going on with our budget at that point in time. From my recommendation, the way I've looked at it is I felt that continuing Jeff Fordice in this role of just engineering services and identifying the specific projects which we want to have completed within this period of time will help fill a gap until we're able to have our rest of our management in place and so that we can move forward. Since he won't be having the DPW job and those duties and responsibilities and all the, that goes with it, he'll be able to focus mainly on the engineering aspects that we have. And as we just had this discussion just 15 minutes ago, Jeff clearly understands all the projects and things that are coming forward right now, that we need to make sure that we continue. If we bring into a, a new consultant, we're going to have to retrace all of that activity and try and figure that out. And some of these projects just won't move forward. I think they're just going to basically freeze. So the idea of, during this transition, we would also have Dan Bennett be the interim DPW director. He would receive, as identified in there, a bit of a administrative differential that would allow him to do most of those functions, whatever we think that he can handle. And then the other funding would come, as Todd had mentioned earlier, Mr. Campbell had, that we'd have it from the savings of an open position and from the other turnovers. At least this is just a interim approach and having the most expertise and having the most skillset of the individuals that already understand what's going on and have, have already proven what we're going to go into in the next few months, I think is a great step for us as council to at least move forward for right now until we have a better structure and understanding of our new manager in place.
So let me understand you correctly, Mr. Gerbaugh, so people can respond to your recommendation. So Mr. Fordice on as city engineer for a six-month period, elevate Mr. Bennett to be the interim DPW director. Would you also then repost the DPW director's position and be interviewing and screening candidates?
Correct. We'd want to continue that so that hopefully we might have a candidate. And if the new manager is in place, be able to select and interview the final finalists that we have for that. I think there is some concern too about making sure that we have some kind of a correlation going on with the idea that if something, if Mr. Fordice should need to step away from the position or something happens, that we might also parallel with it a request for qualifications, as was also suggested. But Mr. Fordice could also help assist with the qualifications in terms of what we would do for a proposal because he knows the job as much as anyone.
Okay. So it's really a, a fourfold recommendation.
Correct.
stays on as city engineer for six months, Dan Bennett gets elevated to be interim DPW director. We repost the position as just DPW director, and then we also submit a RFQ request for a quotation for consulting engineering services.
Correct.
Yeah, very good. Understood. I got your recommendation. Councilwoman Dillon, your thoughts on the matter?
Thank you. So I also sat on this committee and it was very clear early on that the combined position was not a viable option. We were not getting candidates that were qualified. There are specific certifications that each position requires. You know, specifically for an engineer, we needed a PE, not just someone that had some sort of an engineering type degree. As far as the DPW, there are classifications, water certifications, things like that, that are very specific. And it's not like you can just, you have to have them to come into this position. And we weren't able to find that combination. So the committee did discuss it even after our second attempt. I mean, we knew that we really were not going to find the candidates. So the committee has, has definitely, you know, put forward the idea of splitting these positions, which was not a new idea because this is what the organizational review had suggested initially. So I mean, I think that right off the bat is the way to go, that they need to be two separate positions. As far as the pieces in between there, I'll talk to them individually. With the DPW director position, I guess what we need to do is re, in my opinion, is to repost that position immediately. You know, in a perfect world, we would have a city manager in place. But I think that we don't know how long these searches are going to take. And we just can't wait on one to start the next. So I would think that we would immediately begin that search for the DPW director with Mr. Bennett serving as an interim director from the time Mr. Fordice leaves until that new person comes on, on, on board. And right now, we're utilizing this three month. I mean, we don't know that that's what it's going to be. And so I, I don't want to go hard and fast with, with numbers or amounts because it could be a six-month process. We're not really 100% sure what the market is like right now. So as far as the engineering services are concerned, it does make logical sense financially to have Mr. Fordice do a bit of a transition. And I say that with a little bit of trepidation because the, the $1,000 number that we keep throwing out there was just that. It was, it was just sort of thrown out to us from Tetra Tech and we've just kind of kept it flowing. We have not done any kind of requests to know that that's a concrete number. So I just want to make sure that we put that out there. At least that's my feeling about it. I have some concerns about this, about the Mr. Fordice position. One, that the city has never had a past practice of having an employee, a remote employee on staff. If that's an avenue we want to pursue, I don't know whether we need to be very specific about it because it, it definitely will open the door. And the city needs to decide if that's a door it wants to open. You know, I, I think there's other opportunities, more of a contract, a contract consultant versus an actual employee that's incurring benefits and such. So I think I would definitely want to explore that a little bit more and make sure that, you know, that's something that the group, how they feel about this. But at the same time, and I know that I, this was something that Mr. Gerbaugh and I sort of, I think, saw differently at one point. And I think maybe we've kind of come together a bit, is that we can't have Mr. Fordice going. We need to be actively searching for that engineer while Mr. Fordice is in his position. And that might mean some sort of overlap. And that's why I think more of a contract, a contract position versus an employee position would be appropriate. That we could find an engineer first time around. It could be, what if it's longer than six months? Are we going to, are we going to do this? Or, you know, I don't want to be committed to one without the other. Because what if Mr. Fordice were to find a permanent position in his new location and give two weeks' notice to the city, which would be his right as an employee? We would be back to square one where we would have nobody and we would have no leads forward. So I definitely would like to see what the other council members feel about this.
Okay, very good. Mr. Seo, your thoughts?
Well, it sounds to me like Mr. Gerbaugh and Ms. Dillon have spent a good deal of time and effort on this effort, on this project already. And I go mostly with what they said. I don't know how we're going to find a hybrid position that we think we're dreaming of. I don't know that we're ever going to find the perfect candidate for a city engineer, given that things seem to be at such a slow pace right now. And I certainly don't see any objection to continuing Mr. Fordice's remote employee to fulfill that role because he knows what's going on here in the city, Saline. He knows what most of the projects are and he knows how to carry them forward. So I guess from what I hear, I guess I favor my two colleagues have said.
So just so that I'm clear, Mr. Seo, so that would be Mr. Fordice stays on for six months. We repost for the, just a DPW director. Dan Bennett gets elevated to be the interim DPW director. And we also submit a RFQ to begin evaluating outside services to provide engineering services long-term.
Correct.
Yeah, fair enough. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, the, when I back up, it looks like there is not a lot of continuity and thought kind of flowing throughout this whole process. This is when I wish we did have an HR person because an HR person would be able to advise us, you know, not only go back and say, hey, the market isn't going to have the candidate with that, those two qualities. I'm in support of splitting that. I, I, I worry too about the remote nature because I, I think, I think it's going to be really difficult and because we haven't done it before. And we're in a, a position of some precariousness. Our city manager has, you know, we've agreed to a separation agreement tonight. And, and so what feels like the most stable thing we could do? What does not feel like, oh, we're grasping at straws and this sounds like a good idea? I think we need to, to really back up and look how we're, look at how we're making decisions. Who, so Mr. Marl, who would be overseeing Mr. Fordice if he were to be kept on with the city?
It would be an interim city manager.
The interim city manager?
It would be an interim city manager, correct. Well, we'll.
And the transition team.
Yeah, well, we'll get into this in greater detail. You know, the next item on the agenda is organizing a special meeting. But my recommendation would be, it would be a combination of an interim city manager and a transition team that we, meets weekly to discuss operations and policy.
Right. And I think the piece that's missing for me with that suggestion is that of expertise. It, it kind of sounds like a good idea. We've done it before. We did it, you know, before Mr. Campbell came, it was fine. It, it's just a different time. So I, I think at this point, and it's certainly not personal to Mr. Fordice because, you know, gosh, we work together in HTC. It, it is not a personal thing, but I just, I think under these circumstances, I would prefer a contractor for the engineer. And, and to have an interim DPW director, have, have the assistant be the interim. And again, I'm not an HR person. So I don't even feel confident in my saying these things because it's not my area of expertise. I just don't feel like I have enough information. But that's, that's how I would do it, is to go with a contractor for the engineer position.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Delarco?
Thank you, Mayor Marl. And I'll state at the outset that I, I feel it's imperative that these two positions be split. The DPW director separate from the city engineer. I think it's caused undue burden on Mr. Fordice to try to serve in both of these roles. And in trying to find someone and recruit someone for that position, it's been next to impossible. There's very different skillsets involved. There's very different personality types. And I have no question in my mind that that's something that I support is to separate those two positions. With respect to Mr. Fordice staying on as a six-month, part-time, 30-hour-a-week, essentially consultant, I think it makes the most sense as Mr. Fordice has a tremendous amount of familiarity with projects that are currently being designed and scheduled to move forward and to bring in a consultant at this time. It would literally be a nightmare to try to bring somebody up to speed and expect that these projects are still going to be completed. I say that though, with the understanding that my agreeing to keeping Mr. Fordice on for a six-month period of time is contingent upon in parallel, pursuing the RFQ for a consultant on a part-time basis to help us navigate the transition period. We're going to be in a major state of flux with looking for a, a new city manager. There's going to be a lot of transition involved. And I, I think Mr. Fordice could serve as a, an excellent consultant to guide us through the process of identifying an appropriate city engineer. And I don't want to see the RFQ wait until the six-month period has elapsed before we move in that direction. And I do think also that we need to have some thorough discussion about the pros and cons of using a consultant engineering firm as opposed to keeping our engineering services in-house in the city of Saline with a part-time city engineer because there are a number of advantages to that, that I see where the same arguments can be made as to why we keep our police dispatch in-house. There's, there's a number of reasons why I support keeping engineering services in-house. So I just want to make that clear at this time. But to answer the, the four-fold question, separate out the, the two positions, elevate Dan Bennett to interim DPW director, keep Mr. Fordice on in a six-month, 30-hour-a-week capacity while in parallel, concommittingly pursue the RFQ.
Very good. That was perfectly clear. Thank you, Mr. Delarco. Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Thank you very much. Lot of information to cover here. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of pros and, and cons here. Not, not and we're forced to in a position of making a lot of many assumptions based on the timing of this, at, at this late, late juncture of only having two more weeks of Mr. Fordice's services. My, my biggest concerns are, as Ms. Dillon discussed, having a remote employee on staff and what kind of precedent that'll set. How, how we navigate that. You know, overseeing that by transition staff or transition team. It, it's hard for me to see what that, what that looks like. And this isn't just remote in this, you know, in the state of Michigan. This is, this is quite a distance away and no disrespect to Mr. Fordice. You know, I want, I want continuity. But I'm, I'm also not comfortable with the, you know, with the cost projections. I agree, we need to have the position split as engineering and, and DPW. I, I think we, I think we need some outside, outside assistance on how other municipalities have dealt with this on a more recent basis. So I understand the precedence that we've, we've done similar employee movement before, not, not remotely. But I would be interested in seeing what the Michigan Municipal League, how they would weigh, weigh in on this. Because I'm not, I'm not sure what our, what our, our, our risk is with having a, a remote employee. And what if we have other employees that, that want to do that? I, I don't, I don't know. None of us really know. And this is another situation where an HR manager would, would really be beneficial. And we don't have that luxury of, of, of waiting. of, of waiting and, and hiring an HR person first. And we don't know when our. We have to hire a new city manager. So there's all these, all these moving pieces and. You know, to be honest, I'm. You know, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the, with, with the options. I definitely think we need to get an RFQ out for the engineering consultant. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that Dan Bennett has previously served as an interim DPW manager. Is that, is that true? Mr. Campbell, can you weigh in on that?
Well, not since my tenure.
Okay.
So Dan has, when I'm absent, he's generally been the, the person in charge. And certainly now that he's in the deputy position, he's the person in charge when I'm absent.
Okay. So when, when, if he's the interim, then who will pick up and do his, his other, his previous tasks? How will that be handled?
It, it'll be challenging. You know, the, the organizational review recommended, you know, those three positions, a deputy, a director and a city engineer. And, you know, so momentarily, both the director duties and the deputy director duties would be on Dan. And that's, you know, that's the unfortunate nature of an interim position. Whoever gets tagged with interim city manager is also going to have that struggle as well.
All right. And we, you're already down one, one staff member or you're operating with ideally needing another, another person on staff. Is that correct?
We were, we're actually down two from where we were just six months ago. And we had been planning to hire two, but now we're, we will just be hiring one. And it depends on how far back you want to go in, in history to define what's a, what, what is a full DPW staff. There was a time not too long ago where we had 16 crew members.
Okay. That, that really makes me question the, the full logic of, of this four-pronged approach. You know, this, this isn't an easy endeavor. So I'm just trying to use the best information that we have to make the, you know, you know, a good decision. So. I, I see some real deficiencies with this and I'm, again, I'm not pointing any fingers, but I, you know, I, I, I can't support this. I think we need more information and to make sure that things are, are going to run appropriately. And, you know, who's, who's going to be backing up? So a little bit more specific information. I know, I know it's late hour, but, or not just late hour as being almost 11 o'clock. But, you know, we don't have a lot of time. But I still think it's important to make, to make the right, you know, to make the right decisions and not, not make rushed decisions. So. That'll wrap it up for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will, my, my position mirrors that of Mayor Pro Tem Gearba, councilmembers CEO and, and Del Orco. So I'll make this a majority. This is an issue that I've spoken to staff about and spoken to my council colleagues, specifically Councilwoman Dillon and Mayor Pro Tem Gearba multiple times about. I think Mayor Pro Tem Gearba's comments this evening were, were, were perfect. I mean, he, he's, he's on point and he makes a very compelling case. These are less than ideal circumstances, but I favor a four-pronged approach, which is to separate the DPW and engineering position, move expeditiously to replace our, our full-time DPW director who's relocating to, to Oklahoma, to elevate Dan Bennett to be the interim DPW director. He's more than capable of doing that. And I would note for the record that successful organizations find ways to empower and elevate quality employees. I would also move expeditiously on an RFQ and keep Mr. Fordyce on for a six-month period to serve as city engineer. So staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have direction.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments. Transitioning to.
Can I just interject for one second? Is there? Is there an opportunity to look in, in as to the direction? Like I said, we, we are setting a precedent in, in doing in a remote employee position. I know we've talked about this as a unique situation, but I mean, every situation could be a unique situation. And so I do have concern about that. I, I think it should be an hourly contract position versus an onboard employee. I, I think it would be, it'd be cleaner for the city as far as, because we did discuss very specific duties that Mr. Fordyce would do, very specific projects. And so I think attaching hourly rates to those would be, would, would just be common sense.
Yeah, I, I could see it either way. Mr. Gearba, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I was just going to be saying, having served as an HR manager for 10 years, what we've done in the past is that we've designed a type of agreement that works for the telecommuting. And so that it puts in place what the kinds of liabilities and such are that. And I think we can draft up something that's similar to that and have our attorneys look at that. From the other perspective, continuing as an employee, the IRS looks at it as a little bit differently. It's not necessarily an independent contract. If you continue to do the same activities that you've done before. Nothing says that we couldn't do it as a term contract, but it's just up to how we want to approach it. And perhaps talking a little bit with Steve Gerard may be able to help us clarify how we want to move forward on this.
Yes, I would. I definitely would like to speak to Mr. Gerard about it and, and sort of explore both sides of the issue and see what's most beneficial for all parties.
Mr. Gearba, in, in your former capacity as HR manager, you referenced that you, you had a, a policy at U of M referenced working remotely. Is that a document that you could get your hands on and share with us so that?
Yes, it's a public document. It's actually full-blown policy and how it's addressed. And we can discuss that. Individual units have their own abbreviations of it and how they handle certain other aspects. But from my perspective and looking at, we've had a number of directors and individuals that have worked from Indiana, worked from other states, California, DC. And they've done similar roles in which that's how the trend is going. People want to be able to work from their locations. And when you look at dual careers and those type of situations, a number of those are done as an interim basis in order to keep the unit and the organization functioning.
Very good. Yeah, I look, I'd like to take a look at that policy. I think that's a good idea.
Your Honor, this is Kristen.
Please.
Oh, thank you. I just want to point out a couple of pieces of information. The organizational review was done in a period of time that anticipated growth. We were anticipating La Her Farms coming on and also the possibility of Andalina Farms. So that just to get an idea of right sizing our staff. And I'm concerned about too, too many management, too much management versus people on the ground who are doing the work. And, and that really, when Jeff said, you know, we used to have 16 staff members, that says something to me. We did not have the population, the houses that we do now. And in looking at some of the maintenance things, you know, the, the water mains not being flushed quite as often. Other maintenance things that haven't been happening, is it a result of just being perpetually short-staffed by people who actually do the work? And I also want to point out that, you know, it was, it was said that Mr. Fordyce told us that he was leaving in February and that it is now June. And it is two weeks before he's leaving. And, and I just, I think this is not the pace and not the timeframe that city residents deserve. I think we could have been moving much faster on this issue. So I, it sounds like I'm just not going to be happy tonight. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Mr. Gearba, do you want to elaborate on that point as a member of the committee? I, I know you worked aggressively and COVID had an impact on, on, on the frequency in which you could meet to develop consensus. I don't know if you wanted to address the concern that was raised by our colleague.
No, I mean, that's part of it. And the fact that we've had it posted and Mr. Campbell knows that we just didn't have responses to it. And so you can only do as much as you can during the search.
Right, but you also had a unicorn.
May I speak?
He has the floor.
And we've gone for six months. We had the pandemic occur. We, as a committee, there's a number of us participating as that search committee. And I'm not saying that we would have been able to do things faster. When we had the entire staff being tied up because of COVID and having split, I would say split options of how they had to handle their duties and responsibilities, we would have had a lot more time and dedicated to it if we didn't have to have them trying to handle and keep our city from, you know, being impacted due to all the changes in their structure and in terms of their duties. To throw that under and out there that we were waiting too long is not correct. We were trying based upon when Mr. Fordyce turned in, in his resignation. So if Ms. Dillon has a different approach from this and her expectations was different, I'd like her to make a comment.
Janet, you could make any comment?
Thank you. Um, you know, yeah, hindsight is always, you know, better, let's say. Yeah, we should have been much more proactive. We saw the writing on the wall early on. And we should have, we should have moved in a different direction, much swifter than we did. I wish we would have. I wish that that the city manager would have, would have moved things along faster. We, we didn't. We're at this point. And, you know, now we're sort of stuck where we're making decisions. And there are, there's a lot of questions about a lot of different things. And so trying to figure out what is the best short-term answer that's going to bring on the best long-term results is, is what I'm trying to focus on right now. And like I said, there, it's, it's definitely not the perfect scenario by any means on a lot of different levels. But I, I, I'm hoping that we can agree as a council to figure a way to move forward. We do right now, Mr. Fordyce has a few projects that are ready, set to go. And if he is not here to do those, they may not be able to happen. That being said, future projects a few months down the line. I, you know, once he is not going to be physically on site, I do have some reservations about that. So, you know, maybe it's a reconfiguring of our project priorities.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell, anything you'd like to add before we wrap this up and transition to, to our next discussion item?
I appreciate that. I think my issue is, is that we're flying by the seat of our pants. And, you know, as far as the COVID thing, we're all meeting remotely. I, I guess I, is it a little slower? Yes, it is. But we were looking for the wrong position. And I just, I think, I think the city deserves better than that. I think it was very poorly handled. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, we're going to transition now to organizing a, a special meeting. My understanding is that folks would like to meet, and I think it's a fine idea to discuss this transition period. And so I want to find a date and time that works with everybody's schedule. Because I think that, that approach is, is indicative of a best practice. So I would like to propose, if it works with everyone else, is to try and find something for this Thursday evening, which would be the 18th. I would like to meet earlier if possible. Let me begin with Councilmember Gearba. Mayor Pro Tem Gearba, could you potentially meet on the 18th beginning at 6:00 PM?
How long is the meeting going to be?
I would like to keep it between an hour to two hours.
As long as it stays within an hour, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Councilwoman Dillon?
Um, I do have a commitment Thursday. I think it's at 7:00 PM. I'm going to, while we are going through this, I'm going to try to look online very quickly to confirm that.
Let me transition then to Mr. Mr. C, Mr. CEO.
The purpose of the meeting is?
To discuss the, sorry, my phone is buzzing like crazy here. I'm having terrible reception this evening. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss this interim period and interim city manager, a transition team, and any other outstanding issues regarding Mr. Campbell's imminent departure.
Yeah, I guess I'd be willing to spend an hour, but if we spend much more than that, we're just going to end up thrashing again like we have been.
Okay. So six though works for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
I am not available. I have a social justice class I've been taking since February. We were supposed to have our final class and kind of the culmination of all these projects last week, and there was no power. So right now I'm booked for Thursday. And, and I'm so sorry, can you repeat what are we doing in this meeting?
My understanding is that folks would like to discuss the interim city manager position, the transition team, and other outstanding issues that need to be wrapped up before Mr. Campbell's departure.
Can you go on to other people? Can I think about it for a minute and come back?
Sure. I mean, if you can't make it, I was going to propose an alternative date, which would be next Monday, the 22nd, also at 6:00 PM.
I'm completely free on that day, so.
Back to Mr. Gearba in an effort to try and find a time that works for everybody. How does that date work for you, Mr. Gearba?
What, what date again?
It would be a week from today, the 22nd at 6:00 PM.
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. CEO, does that work for you?
Works for me.
Okay, Ms. Dillon?
That day actually is much better for me, Monday, the 22nd.
Excellent. Okay, that's good to know. Mr. Del Orco?
Monday evening, the 22nd is, is fine for me.
Okay. And Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Did you say at, at 6:00 PM on Monday, the 22nd?
Correct.
I believe that'll work for me as well.
Okay, well, then it seems like that's unanimous. If the clerk would be sure to post that. And in accordance with the governor's existing executive order, we'll continue to meet online via Zoom.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll get you the information in the coming days. The last item before I read the Juneteenth resolution is NOVAC proposal for HR. Mr. Campbell, are you taking the lead on this?
Certainly. So as my understanding, the, the council directed me at the last meeting to contact the NOVAC group to request a proposal for assistance in finding a search for the HR manager position, which included helping us with developing a job description and, and then also doing this search. So this is, I provided that to council, the documents that the proposal that NOVAC sent out to us. And so if, just waiting, I guess, looking for direction from council.
Okay. Mr. Gearba, your thoughts? You're muted.
Since I'm not the one that really supported this moving forward on this position anyways, it's up to the council to decide what they want to do with it.
Okay. The other thing, I, I appreciate that. The other thing I, I should have added, and I don't even know if I debriefed Mr. Campbell on this, but last week, Friday, I had a conversation with Heidi, who's one of the partners at the Sage Group who conducted our compensation study. And we were actually on the phone discussing a separate matter. And as we were concluding our phone call, she said, can I, can I bend your ear about another subject? And I said, absolutely. And she said, she indicated that she's been following our, our meetings, referenced the city, or city manager. It's late. HR manager's position. And she said, you know, I would, I would like to request that somebody from staff or multiple people from staff connect with me. Because she said Sage would be willing to provide a quote, to provide HR management as a, on a consulting basis. We would have one-point person, but we would be able to leverage multiple people with various expertise. And most importantly, she said that we could save you money. So, you know, I'm not obviously committed to using Sage, but based on how emphatic she was on the phone with me last week, I think we owe it to ourselves and more importantly, our taxpayers, to reach out to them to see if we can provide this service and, and do so in a, in a cost-effective manner. Councilwoman Dillon, your thoughts?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I, I am, I'm agreeable to, to your suggestion there. And I will be frank that I did not read all of this data. This came to us late Friday night and I was already knee-deep into over 200 pages of material for the council meeting this evening, in which we were repeatedly getting other information. So I, I don't feel as though at this point I'm in a position to adequately make a decision. I have just looked at basically the very basic things. I have just looked at basically the very basic things, the cost for the search and such, which was really what I was looking for to begin with, was, you know, I guess the ask that I had about contacting NOVAC was that they did our search and asking them if they had a recommendation as to a direction that we should go. Because there were different avenues that we, we discussed. There were different tiers for the position at one point in time. There were, you know, in-house versus contract, as you've just discussed. Well, that was another option that we've talked about in the past. And so I, I had thought that based on their working knowledge of our organization, that they could provide some guidance to take us to the next level as to a position.
Fair enough. Thank you. Mr. CEO, you're, any thoughts?
I have none, your honor.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, your honor. So just for full transparency, I spoke with a consultant and she recommended Sage as a firm to do a task. And I said, well, that's very convenient because we're already contracting with Sage. And so this business consultant is someone who has worked with the city in past, knows about a number of positions that were down right now. And she suggested that a firm would be a very, very good idea because having one person to do all of the things that our organization needs from, you know, this is someone who's been on the inside. She says it's really tough. And, and she sold me on the idea of having a firm. And then we can have the flexibility as well. And I think it is an advantage price. So I, you know, I heartily agree. I appreciate the mayor's points and I'm ready to go in the direction of a firm.
Thank you. Councilmember Del Orco?
I, I guess I need a little bit of clarification on what's being suggested. I, I, late Friday night, we got information about a proposal from the NOVAC group in terms of what they would charge to help us identify, vet and hire a candidate for the HR manager position. And I'm unclear on what's being proposed with Sage. Is Sage going to do that same service? Or is Sage going to serve as a consultant in the HR manager capacity?
Yeah, the latter. So I think as a result of this phone call that I had late Friday, there's some new low-hanging fruit, if you will. Sage made a very emphatic, well, the, one of the partners at Sage made a very emphatic pitch to engage them to provide some sort of proposal to city council for Sage to provide HR managerial assistance to the city of Saline. And so based on how, how direct Heidi was and the fact that she said, in the process, we could save you money, I think we owe it to ourselves and the organization to have staff reach back out to them to vet this a little bit further and then come to a subsequent council meeting with a recommendation or proposal.
I'm certainly willing to hear their PowerPoint presentation and invite them to give us a proposal.
Great. Very good. Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Thank you. I, I was going to ask the same questions that Mr. Del Orco just asked. That I, I don't think, I don't think it would do any harm, that's for sure. And it definitely speaks volumes that both yourself and Ms. Mitchell have had recent positive interactions with, with Sage. So I'm, I'm open to listening to what they have, what they have to say. I, I, I think we owe it to our, to our taxpayers and, and research what the pros and cons are.
Very good. Well, then I think I have consensus. I'll double back with staff tomorrow and we'll try to reach out to Sage. And then my, my hope would be that we'd have something for you to digest and consider at our next regular meeting on July the 6th. So unless there's anything further on this, I'm going to take this opportunity before our final citizen comment period to read the resolution that was passed earlier this evening, declaring June the 19th as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Saline. Whereas approximately 11 and one-half million African people survived capture and inhumane voyage to the New World and were forced into slavery. And whereas it is shamefully unknown how many died during the efforts to capture these people, and an additional 2 million people did not survive the cruel journey from Africa. Whereas these enslaved people were subject to whipping, castration, branding, rape, and tearing apart families for generations over a span of 200 years. And whereas when slave, when slavery of these people was legally ended, the news did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, in particular, the state of Texas and other Southwest areas until months after the conclusion of the Civil War, more than two and one-half years after President Abraham Lincoln issued his proclamation, his emancipation proclamation on, on January 1, 1863. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers were led by Major General Gordon Granger of Galveston, Texas, with news the Civil War had ended and declared the enslaved to be free people therein. Whereas formerly enslaved people celebrated June 19th as Juneteenth Independence Day, inspiring and encouraging future generations of African-American people. And whereas Juneteenth Independence Day celebrations have been held in honor of, maybe I read that, no, I didn't read that twice, excuse me. Whereas Juneteenth Independence Day celebrations have been held in honor of African-American freedom while encouraging self-development and teach respect for black culture. Whereas due to systematic, systems of oppression such as sharecropping, Jim Crow laws, redlining and mass incarceration, the plunder of black bodies and black wealth persists to this day, affecting the physical, mental, safety and education of African-American people. Whereas the faith and strength and character demonstrated by former enslaved people and their descendants of, and the descendants of formerly enslaved people remains an example for all people of the United States of America. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Saline, that, let it be resolved that by the city of Saline, the city of Saline declares that June 19th as Juneteenth Independence Day. Therefore, let it be resolved that we declare this to occur on the 19th and we, and the city clerk will sign this document on the 15th day of June, 2020. Thank you for your work on this. It's an important symbol and message to send to, to the residents of our community and beyond. Referring back to the agenda this evening, we come to the second public comment period under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question under reasonable limits, which may be established by city council. That'll be three minutes. Anyone who'd like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Clerk Royal, are there any citizen comments?
I have, I believe, three. There may be four. The first one is from Linda Tahrar and she's at 104 West McKay. She would like to say congratulations to Mr. Campbell for his years of superb service to the city of Saline. Mr. Campbell has served conscientiously, effectively and with great integrity. The next one was from Tran Longmore. He's 325 North Lewis Street. Thank you to city manager Campbell for your service to the city and the community. Best wishes for your next endeavor. And then Anne Hurst Heights, 22409 Chestnut Crescent. Thank you to city manager Campbell for your many years of dedicated service to the city of Saline. You are a man of integrity and have been greatly effective in your position. You will be missed. And then I have one from Dawn Cross, 203 West Henry. And she was wanting to know why the organizational review update hasn't been discussed for months with, or has been on the topic, but has not been discussed for the last few months.
Is there any others, is that, I'm sorry, Clerk Royal, was there, were there other comments?
No.
Okay. One last time, if you'd like to write in a comment or question, you may do so by clicking on the chat icon at the bottom. As it relates to that last question, the organizational review has been a discussion item for probably the better part of a year. The, the petitioner is correct that for the past several weeks and months, there has not been an update. But as new positions are integrated into our system and organization, or as things change, reference the, the NOVAC report, city manager and staff do periodically provide updates. One last call for citizen comments. Okay, then please note our upcoming meetings, which will be on July 6th, and then a special meeting next Monday beginning at 6:00 PM. We will have a work meeting to discuss the wastewater treatment siting study at 6:00 PM on July the 6th. The chair would entertain, I would make one announcement. It's apparent that I am having some serious cell phone issues. So if you need assistance from me later this week, please email. I got probably 15 text messages all coming in at 11:09. And I'm sure that all the people who sent them did not send them at 11:09. So that's on me. My apologies if there are people out there who have texted or called today and I haven't gotten the messages or haven't responded. Let me check the time. So the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 11:21. Mr. Gearbox, would you move that?
So moved.
And Ms. Dylan, would you second?
Yes, I will second.
Okay, very good. It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn at 11:21 PM. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening.